Thank you. We call the Finance and Law Meeting together. Today is Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021, and it's 5:46. First item on the agenda is roll call. Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mr. Souza.
Present.
We also have Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan in attendance. First thing is student activities. There aren't any. We're going back to none again.
Hey, what are you gonna do?
Second item is an interesting item. Disposal of surplus materials. Taunton Public Library School's library VCR tapes.
The quantity is staggering.
The quantity is staggering because there's some pictures. Do we want to discuss that or? Cabral and Ms. Monahan?
Well, I'll just say that many people that may be watching, or maybe not, but they may not know what the VCR tapes are. So they are very archaic. And as you can see, there are estimated to be around 3,000 VCR tapes. And many of them are about 25 to 40 years old. So they truly are dated. And as you can see by the pictures, there's a lot of them.
I wouldn't say they're old. I'd just say they're dated. Maybe, and I wouldn't say they're obsolete yet. The 25 to 40 is really not obsolete, I don't think.
We're talking about VCR tapes. We're not talking about age.
All right.
Mr. Fiore.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is there anything there that could or should be transferred to another medium that wouldn't violate copyright doing it?
That's exactly what I thought of.
They had a listing of the items that were on there, and I don't think there's truly anything that is worth salvageable. And as you can see, a lot of them are, the value of them is barely anything. So I do not believe so. But I will follow up with libraries to make sure there isn't anything that we feel would be better to change them over to a new source of media.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions from anyone who doesn't serve on the Finance and Law Subcommittee at this point?
I think, I think that's a good idea.
I thought I saw some interest. Mr. DeMello.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, exactly. Mr. Fiore's point, I mean, even though there's no monetary value to the tape, the VCR, there may be some value, history. I mean, history is, I think, precious and should not be forgotten. So I do concur with Mr. Fiore that maybe a look at what's on those VCR tapes and save the ones that may be historical content. That's my only thought. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. This is Fagan.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, the only thing is, the problem is try to find a tape player somewhere now.
I have one.
Maybe Mr. Jakes has access to it in his studio, but I mean, I don't even know. I know I tried one in, one of the Star Wars ones I had. I can't believe the difference between watching a tape and watching a DVD. And so many things have been transferred to DVD now. I mean, I would, I agree with Mr. DeMello. Just check them for whatever. But I don't know. Do you still have the ability to do that, Mr. Jakes?
They still make machines to do that, sure.
So we do have VHS players in the district, and I definitely have some in the studio that has the ability to do that. And we do still use them from time to time. The problem you run into sometimes with the older VHS tapes is that the tape itself, like the physical tape in the cartridge, doesn't always cooperate. And when you even put it in a machine, if it had any dust or anything that got in it, it won't actually play. Hence why DVDs became such a better technology. So some may be salvageable. And we do have the ability to play them and check them. But at the same time, there are also copyright issues in terms of trying to digitize things like that. Multi process.
Go ahead, Mr. Souza.
Mr. Chairman, what would be the proper motion? And I mean, we could say that, Mr. Fiore, you have a proper motion, and then we can.
Yeah. All right, I would move that we dispose of the tapes, but that in the process, they be reviewed for any content that could be saved in another medium without violating copyright law.
Second.
Motion as made second. Any other discussion? If any, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Probably should do that in a roll call, just to make sure.
You were in your roll call.
Just FYI, guys, Steve has his hand up.
Up, Steve.
I just wanted to clarify something just for the public and make sure everybody understood this. As I understand it, those DVDs are like the educational type DVDs. I have a library at the TV studio with thousands of VHS tapes going all the way back to the early 80s of football games and concerts and basketball games and stuff like that. So those are not in danger of being thrown away. I don't want the public to be misled and think we're throwing away archived stuff. We do still have all that stuff. I believe these are, this is like the educational content that the district used in the classrooms.
Yeah, I figured a lot of it is copyrighted material that we couldn't do. But if there are some things in there, like class projects or something like that, then there may be people who'd like to see themselves again. I don't want to throw those out.
All right, so we'll do a roll call. Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Next item on the agenda is another interesting one, extended day rate increase. Mr. Monahan, you want to handle that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Martin. As you see in your packet, Ms. Donna Ross, our director for extended day program, is asking to increase her extended day rates. And she did go ahead, and as you can see there, she has a proposal of her current extended day rates and her proposed extended day rates. Now granted, the last time we did do an increase, or the school committee approved an increase, was in the 2019-2020 school year. But given that, you know, we all know that given the times and also the increase of staff that she had to go ahead and hire, also the increase in the minimum wage, which will then alleviate or add into her salary costs, she's proposing to increase the extended day rates. But one thing that we do need to keep in mind, and I will go over this with you after, is that she did do a comparison of area daycares that provide similar extended day programs, just like she does. And as you, as I will present to you, as you will see, that the proposed rates are still well under area daycare providers. So as you can see there, currently, her before school rate, before school extended day is $5, and her proposed rate is $7, which is an increase of seven, an increase of $2. Her after-school rate is between 10 and 12, and I don't have to read that to you. What I really would like to go ahead is if you could bring your attention to the following page, where Mrs. Ross will go ahead and show what the area childcare providers or centers are charging. For YMCA, as you will see, their current rate is $12 a day for before school, and our extended day proposed rate is $7, again, well below. After-school at YMCA is 23, and the proposed new rate is $12. Full day at the YMCA is $50, and then full day at extended day proposed rate is $25. Preschool rate at YMCA, $55 a day, and proposed rate for the extended day is $29 a day. As you can see there, still well below compared to the YMCA. Next one is Boys and Girls Club. Before school is $10 a day. The extended day proposed rate is $7 a day. After-school at Boys and Girls Club is $26 a day. Proposed rate is $12 a day. Full days at the Boys and Girls Club is $40 a day. Proposed rate for the extended day, $25 a day. Again, all three rates compared to what we are asking, or what Donna Ross is asking, is still well below comparing to the Boys and Girls Club. Girls Inc. is a wash. It is the same amount. Full day is $25, and the proposed rate is $25. Now, the big one is, as you will see, is the state rates. So the state rates, again, well below. Before school is $9.39 a day. Proposed rate is $7. After-school is $19.73 a day. Proposed rate is $12. Full days is $39.73. Proposed rate is $25. And the preschool rate of $44.33 a day. Proposed rate for the extended day, $29. So as you can see, for the proposed rates, even though we aren't increasing very slightly compared to what we are charging now, we are still charging much less compared to area childcare centers and also the state average. Any questions?
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I always have a tough time with this one to make sure that we're not burdening our parents, but also making sure that we are covering our expenses on this. And I think that the minimum wage going up and operating expenses, I think that this cost, although an increase, I think that it's reasonable. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on the board of Pine Street Preschool, which my mother helped found over 50 years ago. And we are constantly raising our rates, and we constantly have a waiting list. I mean, I also share Mr. Souza's concern about burdening our parents. But on the other hand, I know costs increase for this all the time.
And I saw Mrs. Dougherty's hand up. Mrs. Dougherty, I recognize you.
Yes, thank you. So I support the beginning sentences of both my colleagues in terms of not wanting to burden parents. And I think we have to consider the effect that the pandemic has had on families. And when you look at these rates, which are modest, as Mrs. Monahan points out, but if a family has two or three children, and they're experiencing a $2 a day, that's $5 a week, times three children is $15 a week, times a month is, and it goes on like that. I think that we have to be very sensitive to that need. Even though the minimum wage has increased as well, the childcare costs will eat the minimum wage or what the family will gain as a result of that minimum wage. So I would, at this point in time, I think that we really ought to just hold this until the end of the year to see what the looks like, to see if there's waiting lists, to see if there are families with multiple children, and to measure the impact in that regard. So you might want to, I have a tendency to want to vote no if I'm voting, so.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the minimum wage I was referring to was the minimum wage that's costing us for our employees, not the minimum wage of someone that's some of our parents. I was talking about the minimum wage that's costing us to employ people that we have to have as an increase to our expense line. I will approve all of the recommendation of increasing the rates to the extended day program.
Anything else? Say that number, Mrs. Ross has to run that building. She pays for her own expenses. So there has to be some income coming in. And number two, I'm sure, without really advertising it, there are cases where people are on a payment plan. If they can't afford to make the payment on a particular week, that some type of accommodation is made without going into detail, because I've known Mrs. Ross for years, and I know that that's happened in the past. So I think that would handle some of the concerns that Mrs. Dougherty has regarding multiple children in a family. So any other discussion? Mrs. Almeida.
I think on discussion, Mr. Chairman, we have to stay with the committee members.
Well, I've got people who are.
Has to do with the committee members, because it's a motion floor. We shouldn't be opening it up.
All right, well, I opened it up for some, so I'm going to continue. Ms. Almeida.
I'll speak at.
I'm sorry, you're on mute, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you, but, Mr. Chairman, but I'll speak at the committee table if it's a problem. No problem.
Okay. Mr. DeMello.
I'll also reserve my comments for the general committee meeting. Thank you.
That's very good. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the request that Mrs. Ross has submitted, and I'll call a roll. Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Finally, we have bills payable for FY '21, the amount of $7. The light isn't great here. Hang on a second. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Monahan, I have a couple of questions. On page one, the ATC Mechanical, halfway down, $5,900? That's COVID funds?
What it is, it is, yes, it is to replace some vents at Letty, Letty preschool for the ventilation system in each of the classrooms.
Seculations, yeah, speculation. Okay, thank you. And I just have one more. Hold on. I don't have to get it marked here. I know it's down the back here. There it is. Page 16, at the bottom, Wentworth, I'm sorry, not Wentworth, I'm sorry. Worthington Direct. It's a, it's a 20, it's a sped 240. It's to a grant. It's paid off, paid from a grant.
I'm sorry, I can't find it right here. On page 16, you said?
16, now at the bottom.
I don't have that here.
Very last item.
Very last one. Worthington Direct, what, $1,878 and change? You guys must have got cut off.
Obviously, it must have, and I apologize for that.
Sometimes that's what happens with technology.
I see it here. I apologize. It's on page 18 of mine. I apologize. These are barrier dividers that are needed in the classroom for Mokahie.
So it's, it's, it's.
It's divided for the classroom, for the special ed classes.
PPE.
Well, they're not PPE or anything like that. They're a different divider for a classroom, for a special ed classroom.
Oh, you mean dividers, then for the, for the instructional dividers. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set.
Any other questions, my colleagues?
Well, I approve that we approve the warrant as presented.
Second.
Motion as made second to approve the warrant, the amount of $782,698.20. And I'll do a roll call. Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Have you anything else for the good of the order?
All of our buildings are not leaking anymore?
No, they are not. They have been fixed, repaired, and we're back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I assume you people got an email today from the superintendent regarding Kohanet School doors and windows will be installed starting Friday.
That is not installed. What they're doing is they're doing some testing. They're removing some of the windows. So the contractor can just make sure how they're going to be installing the new windows coming up this summer.
Well, that's part of installation.
Sorry.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made second. Mr. Fiore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin votes yes. Thank you, everyone. See you in a few minutes.
Thank you.
We ready to roll?
Yeah.
Call the meeting to order. Mrs. Fagan, if you could do the prayer and the roll call, please.
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to the community and to the young people entrusted to our care. On the roll call, Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Sorry, I'm.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
Mr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Souza.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present.
Yes, and we also have a couple of moments of silence for two individuals, please. The first one is for Jackie Hobday, who passed away on February 7th, 2021. She was 85 years old. She was an elementary school teacher in the city of Taunton for 36 years, retiring in 2004. And I can remember when Mr. Baptista was on the committee years ago now, used to always have high praises for her as a teacher. And I recently had someone tell me, who worked with her in one of the schools, said she was just an awesome woman. So our condolences to her family. The second one is John Gueva, who passed away on February 22nd, on 2021. He's 91 years old. A graduate of Taunton High School, he served in the military during the Korean War, also did a tour of duty in Germany. He was honorably discharged, and he worked for the city of Taunton in several capacities for 36 years. But most notably, as a custodian at Taunton High School, where so many people knew him. His sage advice to the students that was to get a job working for the city or the state or federal government. He was also, he also enjoyed coaching, playing WISST and NASCAR. So our condolences go out to his family and the family of Jackie Hobday. Please keep them all in your thoughts and prayers, and we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could just add a quick comment on Mr. Gueva, he was one of my partners at the WISST Club, and he was a heck of a player, and he hated to lose. He was definitely a competitor, so my condolences to the family. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Okay, approval of the third, February 10th, and February 17th, 2021.
What approval?
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. And we have our Student Council report tonight from Aisling Campbell. Thank you for joining us, Aisling.
Good evening, Mayor O'Connell and members of the school committee. Black History Month just concluded, and through the whole month, members of the Taunton High School African American Club provided readings each morning during the announcements. Students of the African American Club were able to present information on an African American achiever at Taunton City Council meetings. Members and advisors of the club were able to present, were able to attend each of these presentations. Also recognized for her work in the school with the THS African American Club and with community organizations, Mrs. Palmer was the recipient of the Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus 2021 Black Excellence on the Hill of Honoring, nominated by State Representative Carrie Borden. Mrs. Palmer shared the honor with Hady Cunningham, the first African American teacher in Taunton Public Schools and the Civil Rights Act List. The THS school's volleyball, football, cheerleading, and outdoor winter track teams just began their season this past week. Hawk-mock contest will begin the week of March 8th. Despite COVID-related challenges, 122 juniors completed the PSAT in January, and plans are underway to offer a SAT for juniors in April. Guidance has established a collaboration with the new Aspire Community Organization that will provide free additional training and support to our staff, students, and families regarding financial aid and FAFSA. The Guidance Department and Athletic Group will be offering a presentation on collegiate athletes on Thursday, March 25th, at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. This program is open to all students who hope to pursue varsity athletics at the college level. The Guidance Department is continuing to work with students on their college plans, including on the SPOT application workshops for Bridgewater State University and Bristol Community College, and additional programs on FAFSA and financial aid. The Guidance Department has applied for a FAFSA completion grant through DESE and hope to hear back soon. This would support additional supports for our college-going students through spring and through the summer. As for Student Council, we are continuing and planning our Mr. THS event that will be livestreamed for students and staff to watch. We also have several students, we also had several students attend the Winter Regional Student Council Conference virtually this past week. That will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Aisling, for that update. It's always nice to hear what you all are doing at the school academically and extracurricular as well. And we really enjoyed the presentations of the students at the city council this month, too. It was really uplifting, very educating. They did a fantastic job, and it was wonderful to have them on. Anyone else? All right, all right. Thank you, Raisin. Okay, we'll move on to public input. Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law Section 30A18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public meeting, the Taunton School Committee, is being conducted via remote participation. No interest in attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this public hearing will be held remotely with no physical meeting locations. These, those seeking to provide public input shall do so using the methods listed below, the following methods. The meeting will be aired live on the Taunton Educational Network Comcast Channel 19 and Verizon Channel 23 in Taunton. The meeting can also be viewed via the livestream at the Taunton THS TV Studio Castus account. A recording of the meeting will be made available at the THS TV Studio Castus account website, as well as the Taunton Educational Network YouTube channel, and that's YouTube, and that's THS TV Studio on YouTube. It will also be rebroadcast multiple times on the Taunton Educational Cable channel. Those seeking to provide public input right now via the phone, and the number should be up on your screen, and that's 508-821-1221. 508-821-1221. Please have patience, because we only have two lines attached to that. And you may have to just call back in between calls. And that's public input via phone during the meeting, and the public input prior to the meeting via email is at wdivine@tauntonschools.org, and the subject line should be "Public Input", and that also provide your name and address for the record. And that includes those that are calling by phone. Please provide your name and your address for the public record, so we can take your call. And then the meeting will be recorded and posted on the Taunton Public Schools website at www.tautonschools.org. So we're going to start out with public input via email, and I know that we have three public inputs via email. Actually, we have four, two by the same person, and these are public inputs that we received that people asked to be put off of public input since the last meeting. So Mr. Barata will start out. I'm assuming, Mr. Barata, I didn't check. Mr. Barata, the other public input person. So, Mr. Barata, please go ahead and start with the email public input.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Souza mentioned, we have four communications tonight. Like to read in the record. First is from Nicholas Costa, dated Tuesday, March 2nd. Hello, my name is Mr. Roberto Nico Costa Carvajal. My children Savannah Costa, 5th grade freedman, and Isaac Costa, 4th grade chamberlain, attend school in the district at the respective schools listed above. I'm writing as a concerned parent after reading the communication email to members of our school committee regarding the opening of elementary schools to full capacity in April. In the communication that was sent out, it was mentioned that for all children who will remain as full remote students, may have their teachers swapped out. This stood out to me and brought about many concerns that I will detail below. I would like to first say that I understand the pressure that has been placed on school districts by the decision made by Desi and the governor's office. I understand that you have little time to prepare, be advised, and subsequently put a plan in place. You are in the decision-making process as I write this email. This gives me hope that we can have a chance to ultimately come to decisions that are best for our children. As I know, Taunton tries to do the best of our capacities. Teachers are being faced with the same questions and concerns that parents have about their children in relation to living through the pandemic. Thank you for your dedication to our children and their well-being. When it comes to the shift in method that we are looking to undertake in about a month from now, I can't feel but think that the option of upending a child's classroom and his or her teacher classmates' routines just a couple of months before summer vacation will be superbly detrimental to their studies. It doesn't make sense to me that the teacher my son truly loves and who is helping him thrive will no longer be with him. His classmates, some of whom have been with him for some time, will no longer be classmates. I do hope that switching children's classrooms this late in the school year is a decision left for the "we have no other options" bucket. Should this option be implemented, it is my belief that. Should this option be implemented, it is my belief that children who are removed from their everyday routines will not be engaged in their studies in the time that follows. This will affect not only their grades, but their mental health as well in a negative fashion. Since the beginning of the school year, my children have been fully remote. This is due to my son's early childhood health, my health and others in our family. With health issues and concerns as well as the unpredictability of symptoms of one who contracts COVID nineteen. They enjoy their teachers, there's classmates in their routines, the connection that is built throughout the year between a teacher and a student is special. The option of changing teachers of full remote students would sever that connection in an unnatural manner. I am afraid that this decision would cause further harm to a student's mental health, considering all that we've been through. I see the benefit for those with little to no concern or those who may not have another option, but to have their children attend full time to return five days a week to the classroom. I can't shake the fact that there will still be upwards of twenty students to small area with inadequate ventilation. There will also be a learning curve for children such as mine who have been fully remote the whole year, are not accustomed to wearing masks all day. Teachers will often have to train the children on classroom and school procedures to follow all COVID nineteen guidelines. I feel this will be another hindrance for teachers who will have to train a whole new batch of kids on proper mask wearing procedures in the school with a couple of months left in the school year. While the benefits of in person learning outweigh those of remote learning, it feels like this option we are discussing marginalizes children who choose to remain in full remote learning. I chose the words feels purposely. I chose it because I understand that you, our educators, are not looking to marginalize. Children in any way, but I'm, but it is my thought that this option does just that. I'm hoping that this message makes it to you and to our school committee so that we may have a comprehensive conversation about the options on the table. Thank you for consideration. Sincerely, Robert Nico Costa, Concerned Parent. The second communication is from Mr. Joseph Marquis dated Monday, March first. Dear Committee, I hope you and your family are doing well during these difficult times. I'm ready to inform you of an issue. I and many others believe is very important to address. The issue is suicide prevention and postvention. In the T P S policy, there is very little, close to nothing about suicide prevention and postvention. This is a major issue for many students, just as it was for me as a student before I graduated last year. I believe it is very important to add suicide prevention and postvention language to the policy as well as implement suicide prevention curriculum in Taunton Public Schools. This would help so many students in turn helping their grades as well. If we get this right, we could be a model district for others to follow across the nation, attach for the record, find a petition with over four hundred signatures. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Joseph Marquis, four oh one Berkeley Street, Taunton. A third communication is from Miss Emily Webb nineteen Bryant Street dated February fifth. Hi, as a parent of a fully remote kindergarten, I feel it's important to share my experience and concerns. I urge the Taunton School Committee to revisit the decisions made about hybrid kindergarten. I urge you to consider two options for our youngest learners, either fully in person or fully remote. Hybrid is not working for the children or the exhausted teachers working so hard to pull off something that is impossible. The kindergartners in Taunton have the right to a free and appropriate education. And that right is not being met now. Remote kindergartners are not getting any time in small groups. They are not getting observed by an educator. They're simply watching school happen to them with minimal engagement. They are not being given opportunities to socialize from a six foot distance. They eat lunch alone as their parents try to make mac and cheese while on conference calls. Those that are fortunate enough to have parents who are granted the ability to work from home. Teachers are being asked to support ten to thirteen, five and six year olds in their classroom while having another ten to thirteen children follow along at home. A number of these children do not get two days in the classroom and every day are more and more at a disadvantage. My child is so discouraged, she no longer wants to sign in onto school. She wakes up every day asking me to allow her a break day and I honestly cannot blame her. She spends most of her day watching as the teacher supports the other children in the classroom, rightfully so. As her parent, I struggle to know what is my responsibility when it comes to discipline during the school day, the facilitation of learning. And observing and sharing those observations with those who have the skills to do such a task. I have asked these questions, received no answers. I strongly encourage members of the Taunton Public School Administration and the School Committee to spend time observing these kindergartners at home. Go see how hard they are working and what they are being asked to do. See how much time they spend watching the other kids in the classroom get support. Watch their faces as their teacher explains things they are not interested in. Go out and see. You in the home to see what we are attempting to do. I invite you to spend a day watching my baby struggle to stay engaged and not get into trouble. I invite you to take over the task of working. While supporting a six year old attempt to sound out words, find her worksheets, listen to the teacher and attempt to follow the directions on worksheets she cannot read. You are making decisions for these children based on what you see in the classroom, which is only one side of the story. I encourage you to speak to the community members you represent and speak on behalf of us rather than your own family experiences. Which I'm honestly appalled that Mayor O'Connell and Mr. Cabral allow in school committee meetings. As elected officials, you are elected to represent the community, not your own families and should be ashamed of the many times you speak about your children and grandchildren. While making decisions for the entire Taunton School Community. Sincerely, Emily Webb. And the final communication is actually a follow up from Mrs. Webb dated today, March third. Hi, I really appreciate the T P S School Committee Administration and teachers for being responsive to my concerns on both the small scale with my individual family, but on a larger scale by incorporating. Lessons learned with my family to all remote families. Thank you all for hearing me and being willing to make changes. My kids are really looking forward to returning to school in March. I really appreciate the work that has gone into contact tracing and T P S along with an effective vaccine that would allow my children to enter school safely. Thanks, Emily Webb. That concludes the public input.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner, for the email public input. Mrs. Mrs. Moynihan, do we have anybody on? Do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, we do. We have one caller right now.
Okay, if the caller could state their name and address for the record before we start and then start their public input. They have two minutes.
Go ahead.
Yes, my name is. To the other show, I am on testing street. I was calling because of the survey we got. There was no outline of how it's possible to go look and. I have two four three that you call and I know they said at tables and I was wondering if they were getting desk. And if we were minimizing the space across them, hiring more teachers to make sure that the class stayed at ten kids and not twenty something kids.
You all set?
Yeah, she just stated she is all set.
Thank you. Tell her thank you and the administration will be back to her. So just a public, is there anyone else? Oops, sorry. Are we no one else? Okay.
No, there is no one else. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We have, we've had the time, we've had more than the two or three minutes we usually wait, so we'll continue on. And I just want to let everyone know the public people that are have sent emails, public report have called. The, the, it's the school committee's policy not to respond. However, the administration has your name and your addresses and the administration. Will be in contact with you to answer any of your questions and bring any of the concerns forward and if this is concerns. Then we'll let all the school community members know, but they'll, they will be in contact with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, if possible, get a copy of the first email communication and the fourth email communication. I don't believe I have Mr. Costa's email and it was addressed to school committee, I believe. I do have number two and number three from Mrs. Webb and Mr. Marx.
Mrs. Mrs. Divine will get that to the other members. That came in directly to her and didn't come to the school committee. So she will forward that in the morning to all the school committee members.
Okay, so first and fourth email letter communications. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank, thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Next is our COVID nineteen Task Force Summary Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm going to tee things up for Mr. Barata and Mrs. Moynihan who are going to present the T P S Task Force C I T updates. So I just want to kind of give everyone a little bit of a background. It's almost been a year, so March thirteenth, today is March third, so March thirteenth was the day we announced. That we were going to close our schools and go remote. So here we are almost a year later. And when we did make that announcement, the Taunton Public Schools initiated a protocol called E M O C, which I'm sure you were tired of hearing me. Reference meeting after meeting after meeting when we met weekly last year. And when we initiated our E M O C protocol, we had nine staff members involved in carrying out that protocol. Which E stood for Education Continuum, Meal Distribution, Operations. Making sure our staff and all our employees receive their compensation and benefits and communications. So again, when we were remote, we launched E M O C. And we were successful in carrying out our protocols or carrying the district to the finish line in June. Shortly after we concluded with E M O C, we received our marching orders from the state to prepare three plans. A remote plan, a hybrid plan and an in person plan. So with that marching order, we mobilized eight task forces. An education task force, an operations task force, a health task force, a facilities task force, transportation task force. Athletics task force, food services task force and a community and family outreach task force. And I can, I can probably say that the work of those hundred plus community members, educators, administrators. And some school committee members that are on the Zoom, now your work has helped get us to this point. As we heard from our parents just during public input, whatever we decide, back, whatever we decided back then and whatever we decide moving forward. It's not going to receive a hundred percent approval. But I can say that the work that was conducted by the eight groups and the hundred plus individuals has put us in a good position to where we are now. So I will turn things over to Mr. Barata. And Mrs. Moynihan, who will walk you through each of the task force or summary of each of their work. Kristen Brenner, you're up.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Jakes, actually, could you project it up? We're not going to read line by line, but hit some highlights. And we'll also signal when to advance and Miss Moynihan and I will, will interchange our responses based upon each task force. So as Mr. Cabral mentioned, we had several active task force, which some of which still exist to this day with ongoing work. All of them follow and the next page will, will show basically a template in which all the other reports, subsequent reports follow. Where we identify the name of the task force, the team members, which most of them all include obviously the co chairs, which will mention who chair those members. For example, the parents, we had community and state members on certain committees, educators and administrators. So we tried to get, again, as many stakeholders as possible. Representative of our community to help inform our decisions where each task force was required to come up with a charge, was given a charge. We identified some summary of our work activities. And then we came up to outcomes. And then next steps. So on the first one, which was the education task force, the co chairs were myself and Judy Mulrooney, the special educator director. Again, we had parents, community members encompassing the family, the Family Resource Center, the Y M C A, school committee members, representative of the state. Educators were teachers and also with administrators in the district. Our charge was to develop. Input from regarding the educational model that the district would adopt for the fall twenty twenty reopening. Whether instruction was to take place face to face, remote or hybrid. So our work summary. Primarily encompassed a lot of research, not only of articles that were being published at the time about the impact of loss of learning. For our students during the COVID pandemic, not only academically, but mental health procedures. We investigated reports out of Louisiana. Which actually had to deal with the, the post hurricane Katrina and what that impact on their schoolings were. And our discussions went forth with also districts around the Commonwealth. What were you doing? What do you think you're doing? We looked at their models as well. So the outcome of our task force. Which aligned with the charge was, after nine meetings, we made a recommendation superintendent of schools to adopt. A two one two hybrid model of instruction, which we implemented the Monday, Tuesday cohort. Wednesday full remote and then Thursday, Friday, moving forward. And what the next steps were made was we provided that information to the superintendent, which helped inform the district's negotiation process. With the Taunton Education Association, along with all the other ancillary budget units, contracted units. So the next one is Miss Moynihan.
So the next task force was called the Operations Task Force, which was led by co chairs Kathy Perry. Who is our Director of Transportation and Student Services and Principal of Taunton High School, Mr. Matthew Mattos. As all of the task force, there were members ranging from parents, community members, school committee members, teachers. And administrators and district staff. The charge of the Operations Task Force. Was really, they started to create parent surveys and then having an overall plan for traffic flow within the buildings. Input regarding the hybrid learning model with the four cohorts, overall building protocol, protocols for educators and visitors, classroom setups. Cafeteria seating options and other district wide operational tasks. Some of the work summary that came about this task force was the work began in June of twenty twenty. And one of the first initiative was to create their parent survey to gather data on a preferred hybrid learning model. So they, they, this task force went ahead and explored many different options, but they also surveyed in the, excuse me, the first survey was sent on July sixth and all of these survey requests. Were completed by July tenth. They also were analyzed, open in plans across the state and as well as across the country. So they looked into other school districts to see what they had come up and also use that into incorporating into their plan. They also continued to draw information from the M T A recommendations as well as those from Desi. Keeping in mind the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and of course, our local Taunton Board of Health. This plan was largely based on the information that was conducted and received in the parent survey. The outcome of the Operations Task Force was responsibility for the following. Recommendations for their mask policy, recommendations for measures for each building regarding space, distance between student desks and building flow. Working with local stake, local stakeholders to create learning pods throughout the city. And so that the next step is the Operations Task Force has partnered with the Communications Task Force. And combined task forces will be sending another survey out to parents if in the early March. To all elementary and middle school families to gain information on the parents preferred model of instruction and to inquire about the possibility of changing. Their present plan, for example, moving from fully remote to hybrid. Or moving from hybrid to remote for the third trimester. The high school already has gathered this information in December, January for their second semester. Mr. Barata?
Okay, the, the next task force we discussed is the health task force, which the chairperson was Karen Reagan, our nurse manager. Who many of us have gotten used to appreciate and and understand the depth of work that she has been doing for. Not only Taunton Public Schools, but the city of Taun during multiple school committee meetings. Members of this committee were our, obviously our nursing department, community, state members with Ms. Doherty and school committee members and state representatives. Educators and administrators within Taunton Public Schools. And it's important to note that although. Any one of these task forces had multiple members, obviously it was dependent upon individuals' schedules, whether or not they could make all or some of the meetings, but all contributed. And most importantly, the work of all these found, these task force have set the foundation for what has gone on afterwards. For example, this health task force took place in the summertime. But because these procedures and such we'll talk about in the outcomes have laid such a solid foundation. They continue to go back to this where we don't really necessarily need to convene the whole task force, but it be, it can make decisions based upon these documents. So the charge of the task force was. Responsive review, reviewing all relevant documentation for the purpose of making recommendations to the superintendent regarding the safe reopening of Taunton Public Schools fall twenty twenty. And again, the work summary primarily dealt with. Understanding, researching and cross referencing all the policies and mandates and suggestions. Not only from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, but the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And, and then all of a sudden us are using this information to help develop guidelines for the Taunton Public Schools that would comply with local, state and federal recommendations. Some of the outcomes came up with developing parent guardian caregiver checklists of how to monitor for symptoms and such at home. Develop flow charts for parents and caregivers and how to assess their child's health and their own and what were the next steps that they should take and also in consultation with us. Developing hand sanitizing, hand washing protocols, assisting in the development of a mask wearing policy. Which we implemented for grades two all the way up and above, and especially with staff. Especially make a note of those individuals who had mental conditions, disabilities, health and safety factors. Obviously establishing procedures and such and dealing with students with suspected symptoms in buildings and that primarily dealt with developing those. Quarantine isolation rooms within buildings. And again, none of these task force work. And again, none of these task force worked in isolation, where some of the, some of our buildings had to actually establish through some physical alterations of the environment, working with the operations department of creating those spaces for monitoring and holding those students in a safe manner until they could be picked up from school with, by family members. They still assist in identification of additional PPE items, monitoring not only numbers, but the types and making sure that the quality that we bring into the buildings is the best we can offer our students and staff. And the next steps are the work accomplished by his task forces past summer. Provided the district with evidence-based protocols and procedures to establish and maintain and ensure safe learning and working environments for students and staff. And of course, as the virus is unpredictable, they will continue to make adjustments as, as the virus changes, either good or bad. Ms. Moynihan?
The next task force was the facilities task force, and I was the chairperson. And so with the people that were on our task force, our charge was to prepare for the opening of our schools safely during the pandemic. The work summary was our facilities task force researched the recommendations from various sources, including Taunton Public Schools teachers regarding the safe openings of our school facilities. So we kind of were talking and researching other, other schools as well to see what other schools were doing. So the outcome, some of the outcomes, as you, as you can see, there are quite a few of them. But the first one, what that we did purchase was the electrostatic sprayers for each schools. And there's multiple ones in each of the schools for deep cleaning on our Wednesday remote days and also any other day that is deemed, deemed necessary. We also provided plexiglass in all main areas throughout our school offices, the administrative, nurses, guidance, and main offices. We purchased EPA-approved disinfectants for all classrooms. We provided PPE for all staff and students using the recommendations guidelines from the Department of Education, meaning they provide guidelines to schools of saying how many masks, disposable gowns, and gloves they would provide to their staff and students. Also, they, we recommended to issue hand sanitizers to all students and staff, install hand sanitizing stations in each of the school's main entrances, supply disinfectant wipes in each classroom and office areas, providing decks, desk, plexi shields to all teachers and students' desks. Also, to test the airflow to, in all classrooms and offices to make sure where we would be getting an average of four air exchange rates per hour. And for any of these offices or classrooms that did not have that rate, we went ahead and secured air purifiers for those areas. The next steps, we continue to work with the building principals to supply their schools with a proper PPE and sanitizing supplies. And we'll continue to monitor the changes in the virus and recommendations from DESI CDC that will be needed in our schools. The next, oops, sorry, Mr. Mr. Barata?
So this is the transportation task force, and the chairperson was Mr. Adovin Ali, the Director of Athletics, which might seem like an odd choice, but actually makes sense because he does a lot of the scheduling of our athletic buses, which obviously we have an outstanding athletics program in Taun, so it's a use to being a lot of bus arrangements. Community members and part of that group was the direct, Ms. Ferrera of the Old Colony Y, Mr. Bloom, Matt Bloom himself from Bloom Bus, Mrs. Fagan, Mr. Dammello from our school committee, and our educators and administrators, some of which are coaches, which obviously, again, used to the transportation and the seating arrangements, again, taking advantage of a lot of the talent in the district, along with people who conducted after-school activities. So great group of individuals who was charged with responsibility of seeking input regarding the transportation of our students, adhering to all recommended state CDC guidelines and developing standards and policies about the transportation and also the efficiency of our transportation, given the differences between cohort A and cohort B students. Our work summary, again, follows same lines what we did with the nursing task force, making sure we added the research and comply with CDC, DESI, Taun's Board of Health's expectations and requirements, along with Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Also parental surveys were generated, determined the level of ridership and whether parents were going to put their children on buses, where they're going to transport themselves. Most importantly, they also researched and provided information around multiple cleaning and protocols, van seating arrangements, inclusive of bus routes options for several districts, or reviewing from several districts across Commonwealth. After seven meetings, they made a recommendation superintendent in conjunction with Bloom Bus Company and addressing the needs of our students in an ongoing basis as the path of the pandemic remains fluid. They continue to meet on a weekly basis between school department and Bloom Bus. And obviously, with the new notification that we're going to be bringing back students more, their work has ramped up again, again, beginning the whole process of surveying families, who's going to be using transportation, who's not, making sure we have seating arrangements set, reinforcing the cleaning protocols and such. So again, this work is ongoing.
The next task force was the athletics task force, where again, Director of Athletics Mark Adovianelli was the chairperson. The charge of the athletics task force was the, with the responsibility of developing an action plan for the implementation of athletic activities for the 2020-2021 school year. So the work summary of the athletics task force was they researched and reviewed all information from state and local entities in regard to implementation of the athletics for the school year. The information was gathered through area, area and state agencies. And the outcome was, upon completion of numerous meetings, a plan for athletics was made to the superintendent for approval of a fourth season athletic school year. Approval of each season with updated guidelines and modifications would be required throughout the school year. So some of the next steps, again, continuous updates from the local and state entities that are listed on the screen, and provide and implemented where warranted through the remainder of the school year. They will also maintain ongoing discussions with the nurse manager and the Taunton Board of Health in effort to have our students returning to play safely. The next task force is the food services task force. And who was, team members included the Director of Food Services Karen Palpa and also teachers and principals as well. The charge of the food services task force was the responsibility of providing meals, breakfast, and lunches to the district's families in a safe, efficient manner, ensuring that our community members would remain food secure. The work summary, they, this task force worked in conjunction with the operations, facilities, health and community, family outreach task forces, and the food services department established food distribution sites at schools and also at community hubs, which lessened the burden for families to receive meals. The outcome of this task force, they identified and utilized school and off-site food distribution sites, which facilitated the distribution of food, developed a centralized meal creation site at Taunton High School, and developed effective plan to distribute the meals to all the sites. They real-allocated food service staff to be helpful in distributing the meals. They developed staffing contingency plans, sought out and responded to community feedback regarding the types and the quality of food. And they monitored the number of meals distributed per site to allow for the adjustment of meals to minimize waste and/or increase the number to meet the needs of families within the geographical area. The next steps of the food services task force will continue to review the practices and procedures that have been implemented to ensure that the needs of the community continue to be met. Mr. Barata?
Yeah, so the, the final task force obviously had the, the, the charge of communicating all the information from all the task forces and synthesizing all the information for the subsequent groups to push out to parents and their community members. So the chairperson was Marguerite Mitchell, Legal Counsel for Public Personnel. Community members, we have Ms. Doherty, school committee members, Ms. Kelly Green from the Family Resource Center, Heather Bailey Gores from CPAC Representative District Staff. We have central office representatives, principals, teachers, guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, Donna Ross from Extended Day, again, a wide swath of, of members of our community to try to bring in this information, trying to pull from them, what is it that a parent would want to hear? What is it that a teacher would want to hear? What is it that community members, officials would want to hear? So their charge was, and I'll read it because it is quite lengthy, this document, was charged with reviewing the communications and family outreach that occurred in the spring of 2020 when the schools moved from remote learning because of COVID-19 pandemic to identify areas where improvement could be made for the 2021 school year, while also reviewing and providing input on needed and planned family communications, including content and mode of delivery. Related to the instructional plans and models for the 2021 school year, the parent surveys utilized for the school year and other district family communications included but not limited to the emergency contact forums, cellists, and the SEL summary communications were all reviewed by the Communications and Family Outreach Task Force for feedback prior to issuance. So whether they developed the communications themselves or vetted all that came through other groups, this was the focal point before the information was out. Some of the examples of work summaries. Communications Family Outreach Force met on its own total of six times between June 18th and August 26th. And then in combination with the operations task force, an additional eight times between September 23rd and February 24th, 2021. Given the focus of task force and communication and family outreach, members of this task force partnered with other task forces as to be informed directly about what was happening in the other task force with an eye towards communication and family outreach. Those included like representative of those groups. Education Task Force Carol Blino, Lucy Salloway, Operations Task Force Jennifer Peters, Erin Kelly Green, Health Task Force members Carol Doherty, Donald Ross, Isa Rodriguez, Facilities Task Force Annabella Jones, Sarah Dustin, Transportation Athletics Task Force Marguerite Mitchell, Food Services Marguerite Mitchell Elizabeth Rodriguez. Again, those individuals served not only on their individual task force, but then reconvened on this group to make sure that the communication was accurate from task force out to the consumer. They discussed what, what was needed throughout the district in terms of a family standpoint from March until June, reviewed ways to improve communication with families, researched reasons why families became disengaged last spring, collecting data from each building and reviewed as a task force, recommendations were set forth for this year. Task force analyzed the prior and needed future progress monitoring expectation communications from schools and teachers to families and students, developing recommendations for this for the 2021 school year. Discussed emergency contact form processes, recommend that COVID-19 pickup person to be identified on and also that work be done to keep this information accurate and updated for everyone. Reviewed proposed emergency contact form cover letters to families explaining these changes for this current school year. Updated family support services to assist students in accessing, utilizing the online learning platform in the community through the Family Resource Center and technologically through the district technology department and creation of family training videos and family support evenings. Jointly with the task operations task force, following actions were also taken. Reviewing the frequently asked questions documents sent to parents in October 2020. Developing a technology what-if protocol for families and staff to use each building to assist in troubleshooting simple technology issues. Reviewed health and quarantine protocols, plans, and proposed family communications related to what expected if there is a positive COVID-19 person in the school building. Review protocols and proposed communications and surveys to families with regards to changing between remote and hybrid learning models throughout the year as well as survey outcomes. And, and some of the outcomes on that, obviously, were all those that I mentioned. Establishes and point people as a primary communicator for each student who's multiple staff members to support their education, increase the use of video communications for families, developing strong plans to keep our EL families engaged and to reengage our EL families if they did become engaged, disengaged. Identify staff in every building or district-wide or in community resources, such as the Family Resource Center, who are bilingual and consistent, reaching our families by phone if necessary. And be sure that our forms are being translated in multiple languages, especially our emergency contact forms. Provide clear communications prior to the start of the year as to the district expectations in regards to turning in assignments and grading, providing at least weekly, but no more than bi-weekly progress monitoring, grades, communications with teachers to all students and families, particularly if there is remote learning or hybrid learning model, using the grading portal and community portal and School Brains for all students to regularly access. Develop and implement parent training to support parents and assisting their children with technology that they'll be involved in remote and hybrid models if these are utilized next school year. And this should be part of the remote and hybrid learning plans, ensure that these trainings are offered in multiple languages and translated. And the next steps of this group is the Communications and Family Outreach Task Force has partnered with the Operations Task Force, as Ms. Moynihan mentioned, and continues to meet to discuss an ongoing basis those issues and concerns that continually pop up and will revise accordingly. Thank you.
So I want to commend Mr. Barata and Mrs. Moynihan for, you know, very, being very succinct in outlining a tremendous amount of work. And I know I've read that, and when you, when you live it, it doesn't seem as overwhelming as when you read it and realize the amount of work and the number of people in the organization that went into, you know, everything that we put into place to be prepared and to be able to shift on a dime. And that resource or that document, hopefully, we'll pull it out in another 100 years during the next pandemic. But that, that resource will serve as well as we continue to move forward with our planning throughout the month of March and into the month of April. So I'm assuming there are probably, probably some questions that may be generated from the committee. So if there are any questions, the team is here, just be mindful that some of the people who chaired those committees are not with us this evening. So if we cannot answer the question, we will get back to you as efficiently as we can.
Mr. Klosky?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Cabral. Well, first of all, thank you, all of you, for presenting that. That's a tremendous amount of work. Really impressive and super valuable. So my question related to that is, do you envision re-engaging any of these task forces to help plan for the return, you know, 100% to school? Because it looks like we've got about four weeks before, you know, the, the target set by the governor. What do you think about that?
Yeah, yes and no. And that's been a conversation that we've had already with the leadership team. We do have a COVID preparedness team, which involves our principals and our, and some of our high-level directors. We have a meeting tomorrow, which we're going to have roundtable discussions and start talking about, and I'll talk more about this in my super report, what little we do know about Commissioner Riley's plan and the impact and what we need to be prepared for. The good news is, a lot of the work, a lot of the heavy lifting has been done. So I don't envision all the task forces coming together. For example, the education task force, now we have our plans in place, but our operations, our facilities, we may need to review those protocols to see if anything needs to be shifted. The transportation, Mr. Adovianelli meets weekly with Agent Bloom. So it will depend specifically, and as we learn more, we have, again, we have a lot of that key work already done. And if we need to pull the group together, we will. We also want to be mindful that a lot of those people are working right now. You know, in fact, when we did this work, it was different. But if we need to re-engage them, we absolutely will. And that's what makes Taunton great. People aren't afraid to roll up their sleeves.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we, oh, Mrs. Almeida?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to commend everybody on those task force. They did a wonderful, wonderful job. So that each, every member of the school committee had an opportunity to serve on at least one of those task force. And I personally was very impressed with professionalism of everyone on that task force, even the parents and people who aren't educators. And everyone worked in the best interest of the students and staff to get everything up and running. And it was a wonderful experience. So I want to thank the superintendent and the administration for all their hard work in getting all this together. And the presentation that Mrs. Moynihan and Mr. Barata did tonight was excellent to condense everything so we could understand all the hard work that existed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Doherty, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick question. I echo the words of my colleagues, Nathan and Jody. I'm wondering to the superintendent if any of these task forces are, have ended their work. Are you continuing on with all of them? Will they continue to meet through the rest of the year? What, what you're thinking in terms of ongoing work?
It will depend. It will depend on the situation and what arises. So as you, as Mr. Barata and Mrs. Moynihan alluded to, two have combined. So we combined the operations and the communication task force. Unless something changes dramatically with the education piece or component, I don't see the education component needing to come back, but Mr. Barata may be able to speak to that. So it's going to depend on the situation and any changes or any shifts that come our way. Because we understand we need to get a broad range of input from our educators and from our community when making these difficult decisions. And, and in the broader the base, and the more recommendations I get, I can make an informed decision or make informed recommendations to the school committee on how to proceed moving forward. So it will depend. Or make informed recommendations to the school committee and how to proceed moving forward. So it will depend.
Just one thing, Mr. Cabral, the Education Task Force, I can say this to the community. The survey has gone out about trying to ascertain from the families whether or not their children are coming back in. For the fifth and elementary K through four. It's important that. Families fill that out to better inform us of whether or not we can anticipate your child coming in. A subsequent survey will be going out for five through 12 at a later date. There is an also an additional survey. They also be going out for our remote students only, those who remain remote. About whether or not they will be, their families would be interested in having their child sit. For the MCAS exam, which is only going to be used as a diagnostic tool this year. And at a later time, we can discuss that, but it's important that we hear from you. Surveys and if and if you feel uncomfortable doing a survey, please contact your building directly. Because we are taking a lot of time now, we completed scrubbing our data to. Confirm who is actually remote now and in hybrid. And then based upon the survey that just went out, we're going to cross-reference that. So we'll know who will be learning remotely. And who's going to be in the buildings, at least from my perspective was one. Obviously, our teachers are outstanding. They want to be prepared and they're waiting to see these children face to face. But also that component about using MCAS as a diagnostic tool. And every child will have an opportunity to take that, especially the remote students. Although we actually have other data as well that we can cross-reference to check their progress. So. Please, community members, if you see surveys come out. Please take the time to fill it out because you can only help us make the best decisions for your children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barata. Okay, is everyone else up? All right, we will. Thank you very much. We will move on to the superintendent's report. That report or place it on fire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as part of my superintendent's report, I know it's long overdue, you know. But I'm happy to finally bring you a draft of the strategic plan. And the way I envisioned the strategic plan, it's going to be a living document. It's going to be a document that I'm going to continuously revisit. With our principals and with our all admin team. To capture all the ongoing work that has taken place throughout the district that aligns with our strategic plan. So Mr. Jakes, would you mind bringing the strategic plan up? And I, and again, because it is a living document. I have added one new slide. I thought it'd be beneficial. So. We'll go with the first page. So the first page, it is the Tom Public Schools Strategic Plan and it is a draft, a living document that we will continue building and add to. I'm just going to move my. My, sorry, my, my gallery view, it was overlapping the presentation. So what you don't have in the presentation that we sent to you is some Taunton data, some background data, which I thought it would be important. For our families and for you to understand and see. Now, what is it or how or what constitutes the makeup of the Tom Public School? So I won't go through all this information. But what I will point out and emphasize is by trade, I'm a history teacher. And I've always felt that it's valuable and important to recognize the work. That was done before you and to recognize those who paved the way for you. So the torch may look somewhat familiar, but I always I refer to it as torch 2.0, the evolution. Because I want to honor and recognize the amazing work that was done by the previous administration on Dr. Hackett. And I see myself in our administration carrying the torch forward. So this is a revised version of the previous torch and we added a letter, we added E for equity. And at the bottom of the slide or the bottom of each slide, you'll see that we've added equity. And I know we've heard, we know the torch represents trust, optimism, respect for all, collaboration, high expectations and hard work. And we added equity. And the statement for equity is we believe in establishing fair systems, procedures in resource distribution. And will create equitable opportunities, eliminating barriers. To access, ensuring every child has an equal chance for success. So that is what the E represents in our new logos. And again, I refer to it as torch 2.0, the evolution. So maybe in the next five years or 10 years, it'll be torch 3.0. So let's see how long this one will last. Does in. If I can have half the success that my predecessor did, I will consider that a great career. Next slide, please. So our mission, the Tom Public Schools is committed to providing academic excellence to every student in every classroom in every school. Instilling a lifelong passion for learning, perseverance and the awareness needed to be productive members of our global community. Next slide, please. The vision, so where we see ourselves in five years. The Tom Public Schools will continue to be a leader amongst schools throughout Southeastern Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, the nation. Our students will flourish from an inclusive education marked by innovative and culturally responsive practices. Ensuring that all students are empowered and equipped to positively impact their community. Next slide, please. Taunton's Theory of Action, which is something I've added. Is the Tom Public School District commits to providing personalized instruction and differentiated professional development for our educators. Then we will become a more inclusive while inclusive, we will become more inclusive while ensuring high quality education for all students. If we hold ourselves accountable to meeting these high standards, our instruction will become more engaging and impactful. Then we will meet the individual needs of all our students. Next slide, please. So our strategic objectives or the four buckets, which are aligned with my evaluation, which are aligned with my goals. But our strategic objective number one on the professional culture, relationships and climate. And when we get deeper into the strategic plan, I will not read every single item that falls under this. But I just want to kind of give you a general overview and feel free to ask questions once I'm done presenting this slide. And we go through the rest and I can I can be more pointed in my responses. So strategic objective number one falls on the professional culture, relationships and climate. So we want to strengthen an environment and school culture that honors and celebrates diversity. And responds effectively to the social emotional experiences of every student and family. Strategic objective number two falls on the curriculum, instruction, assessment in the planning bucket. Provide engaging, relevant and rigorous learning experiences that support each student and educator in reaching their fullest potential. Strategic objective number three falls under the management, budget and operations bucket. We want to strengthen our budgeting process to ensure efficient use of available resources that support district initiatives. While maintaining up to date, secure, safe and equitable facilities that are conducive to active learning. And strategic objective number four, which falls under the family engagement and community partnership bucket. We want to strengthen family community partnerships to support and enhance student learning and well-being. Next slide, please, Steve. So this will be the dashboard that we will use to track our work. You'll notice that we have the number to identify the strategic objective. We have the statement repeated. And then we have one, two, three, we have six. We have six objectives that we will carry out. And again, one of them would be to cultivate and recruit a highly skilled and diverse workforce. So when this will be something that will be shared with our principals and will be shared with all our directors. So that when they are in the hiring season, they can refer to this. And and make sure that when they're hiring that they are cultivating and recruiting a highly skilled and a diverse workforce. To be determined, we haven't got to the point where we will grade ourselves in this work. So this may, this will be something that I could see. Being done during the summer during our retreat or during the next school year. When I meet with the all admin team. And during a survey that we can send out to the public and ask them how they feel we're doing or ask our staff how they feel we're doing around this work. And I also plan to identify key stakeholders on my leadership team and throughout the district. Who will be responsible for carrying out this work. So that is strategic objective number one. Two. Curriculum instruction assessment. So again, you see the strategic objective identified and then we have six. Well, one, one change I need to make is I need to number these. So. You see that we've listed and identified the different steps that we will take in carrying out this objective. So one that is near and dear to me and something that you've heard me speak very highly of. And I think Dr. Ben said it perfectly well during our retreat. Is we're not preparing our students for our past, we're preparing students for their future. So when I look at them, I look around the middle of this slide where it says provide student opportunities to explore. A variety of pathways to college or career choices. So you know how passionate I am. And you've heard me talk about how we're in the, I think we're beyond the Fourth Industrial Revolution, thanks to the ongoing pandemic. But we are preparing our kids for jobs that don't even exist yet. That and when you really think about that, you know, it really, no. It gives me chills to think about the work that needs to be done to make sure that our kids are ready. For jobs that we're preparing them for today, that will be replaced either through robotics or all official intelligence in the future. So we have a daunting task ahead of us when we think about preparing our kids for a future or for a life. Where they can provide for themselves and provide for their families in the near future. So again, I won't go into every single detail. And if you want to ask me more pointed questions. I'd be welcome to answer or dive deeper into the meaning or the interpretation of what these mean. Next slide, please, Steve. Management budget and operations. So. As knowing that I've worn this hat for eight or nine years, this is something that Mrs. Moynihan and I talk about dearly. And regularly. And we've also added. Pieces regarding safety. We've also added pieces regarding our technology plan after going through the pandemic. And I really want to get us to a point where we're planning three, five years ahead on what our budget is going to look like. So very strong and effective organizations are forecasting that far out. So that will enable us to work collectively with the city regarding our financial needs and also communicate to. Parents, stakeholders, know and advocate for additional resources, knowing. That our needs aren't going to go down, our needs are going to increase if you want to continue to evolve and adapt to adapt to the changes moving forward. Next slide, please. And then to continue strengthening our family community engagement. And we want to continue to engage, for example, our parents and our families to design. Design and develop mental student wellness programs focused on emotional health, mindfulness, eating habits and culturally responsive work. We need to do a better job communicating this. As I've learned throughout my three years, two and a half years of superintendent. The community only maybe knows about 10 to 20% of the work that we are doing. So we are excited to be ramping up our social media platforms. We are, we are working diligently to get more communications, more press releases out to the public. To share the work that we are doing, especially around mental health, mental health, suicide prevention. That is something that Mrs. Perry, our Special Education Department, they have done a tremendous amount of work around. I mean, they continue to do work. Now it's up to us to communicate to the families and let them know what we have in place because. I mean, I think about when you make a presentation. That's an hour long, people only pay attention to the first 10 to 15 minutes. And I kind of think about. All the work that we've done in the district, we've really only started to scratch the surface as far as communicating to our parents. So. A communication plan will fall really well in this bucket. And it's something that we plan on doing moving forward. And again, doing a better job communicating. What we have available and all the resources that families have access to outside of school and in school. Next slide, please, Steve. And this is probably my favorite slide. Because we took pictures from pre-pandemic and during the pandemic. And it really celebrates diversity throughout our school system. You know, whether it's feeding families 500, I mean, I think about common stepping up to that challenge and making me dress up as a turkey. To be able to feed 500 or provide 500 families with the Thanksgiving dinner. I think about the work we've done around small group instruction, preparing our kids to be able to work in groups, to be able to work collaboratively in the future. You know, instilling a love for learning and a love for reading. And just when we talk about TPS, our teachers and our administrators do a tremendous amount of work. But we also have support staff, nurses, educational assistants, custodians. You know, when I hear a story about a bilingual custodian. Who helped a kindergarten teacher translate for their Portuguese speaking student, no, that's what makes Taunton great. Again, we are very diverse. We need to celebrate and embrace that. And and really demonstrate that we're proud of that piece. And I think this slide does it. And they recognize the partnership with the city to construct a brand new school, state of the art, that's going to provide no sound instruction. For our students, state of the art instruction for our students for many decades to come because we're committed to maintaining our facilities. Moving forward. So I know that's really a. You know, 15 second elevator speech on the strategic plan, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Cabral. Thank you. This is a, this is a great plan. I appreciate you sharing it with us. And I understand that it's in draft form. So I guess my question is, it looks like this is meant to be our plan starting next year. So for 21 through. 26. So we've got the evidence of effectiveness and measures of success as to be determined. When do you envision having like your your measurements for success and how we're going to measure these objectives? Because these are very, these are all great goals and these are, these are very clearly. Saying out the what, what are we trying to do? The next question is, how do we measure being successful? And when you, when do you think that'll be completed?
Yeah, so I think what I'm, what I'm shooting for is when I can get all my administrators together. So we, we had an all admin meeting plans. I have to put that on hold due to the ongoing work to get our kids back. But the next step, as I discussed with Mr. Barata, is I want to share this document. And kind of do a jigsaw with our administrators and have them provide input. And then really come up with some measurables to identify for being successful and identify the people who will be driving that work. So I see this as an, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I see this as in. I always like having living documents that we can modify, adjust on the fly versus having something that were that stuck or fixed. Because I feel we're more effective when we can adapt and make changes. Because it is five years. I mean, look at what one year did to us. Never, never mind what we're going to be doing two or three years from now. So I really want this to be something that we. To during my all admin meetings, meetings with principals during our retreats, know I want your input. And so again, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but it's going to be ongoing work. So I would target a future all admin meeting or a summer retreat.
Okay, yeah.
Bring it back to you in the fall.
Perfect. That that answers my question. I think that's good. You got, you got to have collaboration with with all of your leaders. This is. This is exactly as you said, a jigsaw puzzle. There's a lot there. And I appreciate what you said about a living document because yeah, you have to be able to pivot. It's good to have a five-year plan. But you don't know what the next year is going to bring you. So. One other thing I would just like to add, so in strategic objective number two. I would very much like to see somewhere in the goals. Some sort of measure of postgraduate success. And I know that's kind of difficult and that's kind of, kind of open-ended. But exactly as you said, we're preparing these students for their future and in many ways preparing them for jobs that don't really exist yet. I wonder if we're ever able to. See how effective we are at preparing these students by seeing what they're doing, you know, not just immediately after they graduate, but maybe a couple of years down the road like. Knowing how many kids we got into college, but how many actually graduated or how many kids started their own businesses or went into teaching or anything. I know that's, that's, that's a lot and that would require a lot of collaboration, but that's something I'd very much like to see in the realm of strategic objective number two.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Okay, anyone else? Is there a motion to accept the report?
I still have the report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
A lot of, we got a lot to cover tonight. So I'll be, I'll try to be succinct. So going into my actual superintendent's report. So as we've heard already and I've shared with you on February 23rd, so a little over a week, which was last Tuesday. Commissioner Riley and Governor Baker presented their return to in-person learning. The intent to present a return to in-person learning plan. Where we would have our elementary students returning to school five days a week or attending remote because that will still be an option. Five days a week, beginning April 5th, 2021. So on Thursday, February 25th, 2021, I was happy to share with all of you that our incident rate per 100,000 was down to 31. We predict tomorrow when the data is released, we're going to be in the low twenties. So Nurse Regan and Heather Galat have crunched the numbers. We're probably going to be somewhere in the low twenties. So the data continues to trend favorably. Which makes me feel confident that we can successfully bring our students back. So the steady decline in the gradual rollout, the COVID-19 vaccine. Combined with the many mitigation measures we have put in our schools. Now, so what we've done in our schools, we have very tight and strict cleaning protocols. We are achieving four air changes per hour in our every classroom. We are running our HVAC system 24/7 in each classroom. We have, I purchased air hepper air purifiers for classrooms that were not meeting the four air changes per hour. We have adopted a strict mask wearing policy and we are adhering to social distancing. So those measures have proven to be very effective. And per nurse manager Karen Regan, we have yet to see any transmission in our schools. So those measures are proving to be very effective. I want to make the committee aware as well as the public that the Massachusetts Board of Education will meet this Friday. It'll be streamed and I believe you can find it, the stream link on the DESI website. It'll be streamed between 2:00 and 4:00 PM with the commissioner will present his plan to the Board of Education. I want to emphasize that it's not a done deal because the board does have to. I want to emphasize that it's not a done deal because the board does have to approve the commissioner's recommendation or the commissioner's plan. If it is approved, it becomes regulatory, which means it has to be implemented. Failure to implement the plan would result in school systems having to make up the time either on weekends, during the summer or next fall. And I also learned yesterday during a conference call with the MASSS Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Attorney Mike Long, that there also could be a financial impact where we could lose chapter 70 funding to the tune of 1/180th for every day that we don't implement the plan. So at a future board meeting, as I mentioned, it'll be discussed. We believe, and again, we believe, or we have been led to believe that we will have the commissioner's plan by Wednesday, March 10th, which will be next week. We have not received any dates regarding middle school. We have not received any dates regarding high school. So we do not know the plan for middle school or high school yet. And we are hopeful that we will learn that plan in the very near future. I have also pressed the commissioner for elementary school, what grades constitute an elementary school. Every system throughout the Commonwealth has a different structure. In Taunton, our elementary schools are pre-K or K through four. The, the community I grew up in was K through six. So that is something that we need to be aware of. In the event that the plan is for pre-K through five or pre-K through six, we, there is an opportunity to file a waiver so that the grades that are in our middle schools would come back when the middle schools come back. So it's refreshing to see that the commissioner is using a phased in plan similar to what we adopted here in the town public schools. And as we know, that phased in plan worked very well and brought back our students very safely. Although albeit not as quickly as many parents or some parents would have wanted. But we believe it worked very effectively. And I also want to reiterate, part of our phase in plan was to build capacity and using our, our students and staff to use the new technology, the new protocols, and also the new educational tools that we purchased and that proved to be very beneficial as well. So currently, and we'll have more updated data shortly. If you go on our COVID dashboard, our COVID dashboard is showing 4,761 students attending in person two or four days a week as part of cohorts A, B, and C. And for cohort D, full remote, we have 3,235. We've received approximately 1,500 responses out of the 2,700 students attending elementary schools. Right now, it's about a 90, 88% are indicating that they want to come back in person five days a week. 12% are indicating that they want to remain in remote. So of the 1,500 responses, that's about 1,300 coming back full in person, 200 attending remotely. So if you were to extrapolate that over the district with about 8,000 students, give or take, that's about 7,000 kids coming back in person, 960 attending remote. So again, that's a lot of work for us to do and to prepare for, because we need to make sure that we can, we can safely social distance all our students in our classrooms and our cafeteria safely. So as Mr. Barata mentioned, he did a very nice job articulating that we have surveys that will be going out. And unfortunately, there is a possibility and my goal, my number one objective in working with our collectively with our teachers unions and our principals and our leadership team will be to minimize the disruption of services to our remote learners. I think we all agree, we want to make sure that every student maintains the high quality of service and access to the teacher they currently have. So until we get those final numbers, we will not know if that is feasible or not feasible. But we will work very hard to make sure that students can remain with their teachers at the elementary, middle school and high school level. I'll save any further comments when we talk about this on the new business. But I just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork because we do have this listed as a new business item. If you wish to continue this discussion and I'll share more information regarding our work to provide our teachers with a vaccination clinic in-house. We are still exploring pool testing. We took a very big step this week in moving forward with piloting that in Taunton, which I will communicate and share with the, with the board. And we'll talk more about the successes. We've, we've been very successful and we'll talk about what transportation will look like and how we've been very successful with, with implementing our sports programs. So these are all lessons that we've learned that will pay huge dividends in April when students start returning in school. And we also have to be cognizant of the fact that should there be a variant, a new strand of the virus, the lessons we learn now will prove to be very beneficial in the fall when we open up under this new norm. So that's the first piece in my superintendent's report. I'll just talk quickly, I'm very proud of you guys as a school committee. All eight of you actively participated and attended the first, I think the first of its kind, Taunton Public Schools School Committee Retreat. Now, for an organization for a board to be committed to ongoing professional development, it shows and demonstrates a growth mindset. It also models for our students and the public that we are lifelong learners, that we are works in progress, that we can all improve. So I want to just let everyone know publicly that on February 24th, this board met with a facilitator named Dr. Anthony Bent and we held our first virtual retreat. Dr. Bent holds a bachelor's, a master's degree and a doctorate degree from Boston College. He is a former superintendent with 15 years of experience. And he's also a former school committee member. So he sees things from both perspectives, which I think was very beneficial. We held a two hour virtual retreat, which included several activities that involved small group discussion, breakout session, as well as a reflective activity, reflection activity. The work centered around the three essential roles of the school committee members. I won't quiz you on them tonight, I promise. It also involves small group work regarding the fundamental characteristics of effective teams. And we also talked about what is it that makes effective school board members? And I was particularly impressed with the level of thought that went into the reflection and how we can improve as individuals to help improve and move this team forward. So that's item two. The last item, I'll just be real quick, it's, it's Read Across America Week. So I hope so, I know some of you participated in providing some readings to our schools. I walk around E-Pole, I saw an astronaut one day, I saw somebody dressed as a sandwich. So the staff are really getting into character when they do the readings with the students in person and at home. So Read Across America Week, it's one of my favorite activities during the year because the teachers really take it up a level when it comes to getting into it with the kids. So not only is it about installing, instilling a passion and love for reading, it's also about being better students and making sure that students understand that the more that they read on their own and the more that they read to by a caring and loving adult. No, especially books that show them or where they see themselves and see their life experiences will make them better students and will make them better human beings. And then the last piece under my superintendent's talking points, which I forgot to talk about, was during Black History Month, we had two district-wide blanket professional development sessions where over 830 staff members attended and some of you attended as well on our PD Wednesdays. For me, the most powerful session was the session called Through Our Eyes, where we had five students who have attended Taunton Public Schools at different levels, representing different races, different, different identities, different sexual identification, talk about their experiences in the Taunton Public Schools. Not only was it powerful for our staff, it was powerful for our students to be able to share those experiences with the teachers. So it is something that we recorded. It's something that I'm working with Mr. Jakes to create a library, because we want this to be part of our ongoing professional development series. And if you are unable to attend, let me or Wendy know, I'll be happy to share the link. It was a very, very powerful session. And with that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Any questions? Okay, now is there a motion to accept the report?
Motion to receive and place on file superintendent's report.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Then opposed, so voted, thank you. Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Even placed on file?
Okay.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Met opposed, so voted. Subcommittee reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Martin.
Finance and Law Subcommittee, excuse me, met earlier this evening when myself, Mr. Souza and Mr. Fury, also in attendance, were Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Monahan. We had four items on the agenda. First one was student activities, there weren't any. Second item was disposal of surplus materials. Taunton Public Schools currently has about 3,000 VCR tapes, which are very, well, I wouldn't say very, very old, but they're, they're outdated. And a motion was made by Mr. Fury to approve the disposal of them, but also to take a look at them to see if there are any that can be changed to a different media so that we could preserve them in the future. And subject to copyright laws, of course. And the third item was the extended day rate increase. The Subcommittee did approve the rate increase and I'll have more to say about that in a minute. And finally, the bills payable was approved for, again, the light is not good, well, the printing is not good, $782,698.20. And that was approved and announced by the, by the Finance and Law Subcommittee. I would ask that the committee accept the report as presented. So moved.
There was a second. Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Mayor, thank you. Mr. Martin, are you going to elaborate more on number three?
Yes, that's why, that's why I wanted to simply accept the report.
Okay, so I'll let you speak and then I'll, I'll wait, thank you, Mayor.
All right, so now as far as adopting your recommendations, I would ask the committee to adopt the recommendation number one, student activities. Adopt number two, disposal of surplus materials and adopt number three, bills payable. Adopt those for those three particular items and
The recommendations of one, two and four as presented.
Or one, two and three.
One, two and four.
He means four.
And two, four.
Not three.
Not three.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, so there was already a motion to accept the report and
Accept the report, not to adopt the recommendations.
Go to the parliament chair, I'm going to step in here as the parliamentarian. So the first motion was to accept the report, that's the committee accepting the report. The next motion is to adopt the recommendations. Mr. Martin has said, adopt the recommendations for one, number one, student activities, number two, disposal of surplus materials, and number four, bills payable. That's where we're at right now. And there's been a motion and a second on that.
Okay, so a motion and a second?
Yeah.
On discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. So on number four, since we are including that in this motion, I have some questions and if we could please, through the superintendent, through you, Mayor, through the superintendent, Mr. Moynihan. On page 13 of this warrant, actually, it is the Power School Group. The amount of $10,082.63, it's listed as human resources personnel. Could someone, someone please elaborate on that expense, please?
Sure, I can do so, Mr. DeMello. So the Power School Group for the $10,000, that is our school spring, which is our license and subscription fees for how we post job opportunities in the district for others to view and then apply, of course.
Okay, thank you so much. And the final item on the warrant is, comes up on page six. And although we received a very informal descriptive from the superintendent, this is related to the John Guilfoyle Public Relations LLC, the amount of $11,988. I did have a conversation with the superintendent and this is regarding PR for the school district. And I am not in favor of supporting this expense. I think it's, it's, it's exuberant. I think we have a superintendent to represent the district in the case of public relations. And just this week, in the Patriot Ledger, the headline states taxpayers' foot bill for PR firm to disseminate news. And when you read a heading like that, of course, it's scary. But just to bring to everyone's attention, especially my colleagues, there were three school districts that are listed here with very, very exuberant amounts of money spent. Hull, $43,096, Waymouth, $45,985, and Rockland in the amount of $49,193. So this $11,988, I don't think is a necessary expense and would ask my colleagues to reconsider and I don't know, remove this from the warrant and let's talk about this before we vote this as part of the total 782,698.20. What do we all think? We don't think anything, then that's fine, but I don't support this, definitely not.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry about that, Mrs. Story.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. Is this to the superintendent? Money that's already expended, we've engaged the, the John Guilfoyle Public Relations Company and this is the bill that he has sent us for services?
No, that would be, that would be the bill for one year of services. So it's a contract for one year of services for them to provide public relations supports during any issue that comes up during, in the school department. So communications that we're sending out to our families, surveys that we're sending out to our families. The recent incident at the high school that we presented a public, a public release, a press release. So any ongoing issues that come up in the school department, we would engage them and that is for one year of services.
Mayor, if I may take the floor once again?
Yes, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you. What is perplexing to me, Mr. Superintendent, is that to go out and get a bid for a bus contract, we, you came before the school committee for an amount up to $10,000. And there was much discussion regarding that and I was one of the folks that voted opposed to spending that $10,000 on the contract bid. Yet you did not come before the committee to spend almost $12,000, which is actually allocated to CARES money. And I don't think that's a good use of resources for CARES money to hire a PR firm. And that's, that's how I feel and I, I am not going to support that at all. I'm not going to support the warrant because included in the warrant. And I'm very, very, how shall I say, disappointed that you did not come before the committee to seek or just share with us your thoughts on spending almost $12,000.
What I can say is I spend more on many occasions during a typical day. We make decisions that cost more than that, Mr. DeMello, and I understand. I felt this was a service, knowing that we're in a transition. The person who assists me regularly with communications will not be with us in the very near future. So we need to begin transitioning. And as I've explained to this group, for example, a community up the street has a PR department of three FTE, full-time employees with benefits. A community in Southeastern Massachusetts has a, one, has one person with benefits overseeing the communications. A community our size has nothing. This is something that you're going to see more and more of in education, especially as school departments, communities continue to combat social media. So I feel it's vital for us to have it. So shame on me, if the committee wishes to punish me, demote me, do something with my contract, I own it. I made a mistake, I'm not coming to you. And feel free to take whatever measures this group feels is appropriate with me. But I don't, I didn't see this committee approving a full-time FTE with benefits to the tune of $60,000 or $80,000 to provide us with PR support. So I thought $10,000, $12,000, which is well under the bidding regulations, made a good use of resources in knowing that the pandemic is ongoing and noticing and knowing what our shotballs were during the pandemic, which was communication. It tied up a lot of my time, a lot of Attorney Mitchell's time and my leadership team's time. So to have this resource, which is a vetted resource that our fire department and our, the police department utilize and after doing my due diligence and speaking with them, I thought it was a good use of PPE because the pandemic is not over, our time needs to be focused on bringing kids back. I can't afford to lose hours communicating publications. And I also want to be mindful of our image. Having a PR firm providing this level of support helps to brand and helps us to maintain a positive image. I hear from many of you, time and time again. I hear from many of you, time and time again, what's going on in social media. I don't have the time, my team doesn't have the time to navigate Twitter, Instagram, FaceChat, Snapface, and all those other platforms to see what is going on and what is being said about us. So having a PR firm at our disposal provides us an opportunity to get our message out and to maintain a positive image in the district. If the committee wishes me to negate this service, by all means, I'll be happy to do it, and we'll make it retro to whatever services they have provided. I would urge you not to, because I think this is something that you're going to see more and more of moving forward. Sorry for the long response.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mrs. Doherty?
Just while our, thank you, Madam Mayor, while our policy does give the superintendent leave to hire consultants as needed within reason, I think that it's always beneficial, at least to me as a member of the school board, to have a plan, because this seems to be a recommendation that may end up being an ongoing kind of consultant opportunity for the district. So understanding what it is that you hope to accomplish over the next months within this school year and going forward would be important, I think, to me as a committee member, so that if I'm asked about this issue, I can say, well, this is what the consultant is doing. So it's difficult, I think, to make very profound decisions without that kind of planning. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Almeida and then Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will support the superintendent, because I think it's important that we have the right information going out to the public. It's very difficult. I mean, there's so many times you see things on Facebook. He said it so exactly what I was going to say before. When you look at Facebook, sometimes people put derogatory things about our school department. If we have a public relations person, they can answer those things, those problems that they come up with. We're no longer going to have our attorney on hand to be able to take care of those kinds of things. And I think this is a cheap money to do it. The city does not have a public relations person that we could use. So the school department needs to step up to the plate. We're always saying we want to be in the forefront of things. So let's just go ahead and be in the forefront and allow the superintendent to do what he has to do to make our system be the best in the state. And I would support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then Mr. Martin.
Particularly addressing the use of CARES funding here. The necessity for public relations firm is largely driven by the extra communication we've had to put out over various policies involving COVID, whether we're in session, whether we're out of session, vacation times, everything. And I know there have been very extensive letters and press releases and things that have been coming out over the last several months. And I can foresee that that kind of service is probably going to be necessary at least for the next year or two, because we're still going to be transitioning. We don't know what long-term effect the vaccination is, for instance. We're going to have to have another campaign to revaccinate. Or if we have other issues in terms of our facilities, we need to put things out there. And it's an awful lot of work for the superintendent or the assistant superintendents to do on top of everything that they've got. And I think this is a wise use of the money.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Just a reminder, the Finance Law Subcommittee, to my colleagues, did approve this unanimously. They approved the warrant unanimously, and this is part of the warrant.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Almeida.
Make a motion to...
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor we need to resolve first.
Correct.
What's that motion?
To adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee on Numbers One, Two, and Four.
Can I move that recommendation?
No, it's already motion. We rerun discussion already.
Yes, there was a motion.
Let's vote on it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Motion made and seconded on a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Sorry, I unmute. Mr. Doherty?
Was that vote, I'm sorry?
Yes. Oh, okay. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Oh.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven years, one day.
Madam Mayor, can I go back to item number three? There seemed to be some interest in discussing number three as a committee. So again, just a reminder, the Subcommittee did vote unanimously for number three, but I believe we should open it up to discussion.
Will we adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee for Number Three?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second on discussion. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. I did not bring this up during the Subcommittee meeting, because I wanted the full committee to hear what I had to say. And I think we're minimizing the increases that are so labeled in the tables that were presented to us. We are at a time that we cannot pass any more on to the taxpayer, the citizens of Taunton. My colleague also spoke, Ms. Doherty, that some have two and three children in the families. So even though it seems like it's a $2 increase, it's $2 times two, $2 times three, whatever that number may be. At the upper level of higher education, such as Bridgewater State University where I work, we've frozen tuition and fees for the next upcoming school year, like many public universities have throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country. And I think this is something that we need to really understand that it may not be much to us as individuals, but to the families of Taunton, an increase as minimum as $2 does affect the weekly paycheck or the source of income that comes into the families. So I am not going to support this and for those very reasons. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Mrs. Doherty had her hand up, and then Mrs. Almeida.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the sentiments of my colleague, Mr. DeMello. People have been so impacted by the pandemic. Many people have lost their jobs. And at the time this would be implemented, people could very well just be getting back on their feet. And I'm looking at the numbers on the line that says, early release before and after school, there would be a $4 a day increase. So one imagines $4 a day with two children, that's $8 a day. Do the math, $40 a week times a month is a pretty substantial chunk out of someone's paycheck who are just trying to get back on their feet. Childcare has really been an issue throughout this entire pandemic for people, even within our own school district, as teachers are back teaching, looking for childcare for their own small children. So I think I had suggested during the discussion of the committee that perhaps we postpone dealing with this item until the end of the year, so that we can look at what the economic picture is for our families who would be seeking this childcare, and then go back to the table and make a decision about the increases. They seem modest. We certainly have to meet expenses. I understand all of that, but so do our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you. I've always sympathized with our families in childcare. It's always a very difficult thing to find. And good childcare is very difficult to come by. I think that the amount that we request for before and after-day school programs are very reasonable. We also have to pay our staff. And with the minimum wage going up, that means that we need to compensate, because we won't have enough money to keep the program going the way that we need to go it. We also have, when you have more than one child or two, if you have more than two or three children, we have a sliding scale for parents to go by. So if we look at that sliding scale, I don't think, and if the parents don't meet the criteria and they apply for hardship, we always give that. We don't leave any children left behind. We service all our children to the best of our ability. And I don't think that it's a minimal amount of money that we're requesting. And I support the recommendation of the Finance and Law Subcommittee as far as increasing it, because it is a sliding scale. And I think that it will benefit everyone to keep the program intact. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Fiore and then Mr. Palowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the Subcommittee, I mentioned that I also serve on the Board of the Pine Street Preschool, which provides this sort of service in the private sector. Mrs. Almeida's own son went there years ago. And we have constantly had to make changes in what we charge because of different regulatory things and different factors involving personnel and labor. There are also things like the extra taxes involved in paid leave and all kinds of other things. And yet, we still have a waiting list to get in there. People are willing to pay the price. And again, it's only to meet expenses. And every other service provider in this industry is up against the same thing and is doing the same thing. And I hate putting a burden on the taxpayers as well. When I was on the city council, I always voted against trash bags. But on the other hand, I know what it's going to take to actually run the program. And I know that everybody else is doing the same thing, and I think we need to go along with it.
Thank you. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my question would be like, these are obviously important programs. We need to pay for them. There's staff that are working them. We're going to pay them one way or the other. So if we don't pay for this by increasing the rates, what alternatives do we have? Are there grants that we could apply for? Are there alternative sources of funding? If there's not, and I would presume that we've already investigated those avenues, then this would seem like the only logical way to pay for it and keep it going.
I can address that slightly. And I think some of the members on the committee can also address that based on their experience with the extended day. So extended day in food service at enterprise accounts, so they are self-sufficient. So they only stay or continue to operate based on the revenue that they bring in. And I know they are obligated to carry a certain number of months of expenses. I believe it's three months of expenses that they have to carry. So as far as grants, I don't believe Mrs. Ross is eligible, but she is not Mrs. Martin for grants. So if she does not have enough to cover her expenses, then we would have to draw down what she has in her revolving account. So that is how that would operate, Mr. Palowski, until a time where we do make the increases. And again, part of it was increased staffing because of the new social distancing measures, the additional PPE. And we don't want to increase costs, but we also need to make sure that these programs can cover their expenses. I empathize and sympathize with everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I do also. I don't want to see anyone have to pay any of these costs. However, in addition to paying her staff and keeping three months of funds available to keep the program alive, she also has to control her building. She pays for everything in that building, other utilities, repairs, anything that needs to be done. That's separate, that's part of the enterprise account. So that's another cost. I mean, that's not the newest building in the world. And it does have its issues. And again, excuse me, the other thing I want to mention is it's only March 3rd. This is plenty of advance notice, because this doesn't start until the summer. The very first sentence in her memo, it would be tuition rates to begin in the summer of 2021. So we are giving ample, ample time to people to get acclimated to what the new rates would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, if we're... Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one final point. I'm hearing the same message from all my colleagues. And the time is not now, that's the problem. We can postpone this until at least September and not start with the summer. We just spent $11,908 on a consultant or a PR firm. I'm sure we can manage until at least September. Let these people breathe. Let these folks get their feet on the ground. Please, I ask my colleagues to consider that. $2 does not seem like a lot of money, but it is to some families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Okay, there's a motion on the floor to accept recommendation number three, and that was seconded. I guess we'll do that on a roll call vote as well. Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Doherty?
Oh.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
No.
No.
No. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
No.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Do we need your vote, Mayor O'Connell?
No, the vote is six to two. The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to go back a little bit, being the parliamentarian here for a second. When we adopted, when we accepted the report, the first motion, before we get into the adoptions of the recommendations, did we have a vote on that?
No, I do not believe we did, which is why I was bringing it up at that time.
Wendy, Wendy, did we have a vote on that?
That we moved forward, and now we do need to go back and take that vote.
I think we did. We just didn't do a roll call.
No, I don't believe, well, Wendy, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin.
I have it as, except as report as presented, and then they moved on to the next conversation about numbers one, two, and four.
We need to just, I, I nay vote on that.
Yeah, I think we could just do a roll call vote on that one. So if we could, so the motion was to accept the report. If we could have a roll, and that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then opposed or voted. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Committee of the Whole, Mr. Souza?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of them here. The Committee of the Whole met on 2/10/21, and that was the Committee of the Whole met with all of the principals for the principals' budgets. And we had a nice discussion with all of the principals, each principal. All of our committee members were there. Each principal presented their budget, their potential changes or increases, and their concerns. And we had a very nice meeting. And then that gets rolled over into the full-budget workshop, which will be coming up shortly. And that is that first meeting. And the second meeting on 2/24/21, and the superintendent stole some of my thunder, he gave half of my report. And that is, we had a retreat with Dr. Anthony Bent, and all my colleagues were there. And we had multiple discussions. And Dr. Bent, as the superintendent said, has been a superintendent. He's been a school committee member. And he talked about how a team, successful team works, and how in different strategies that we can use moving forward. And we got a lot out of it. We had a lot of deep conversation. And I thought it was well worthwhile, and hopefully, we can do a follow-up on that once we debrief coming up. And that is the two Committee of the Holes, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Souza. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the report.
Correct.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Then opposed, so voted. Unit A Teacher Subcommittee, Mr. Souza again.
The um Unit A Subcommittee, myself, Mrs. Fagan, Mrs. Almeida, the superintendent, Attorney Mitchell, Mr. Marata, and Ms. Martin, we met in our first meeting to discuss a successor contract to the teachers' contract, which ends on August thirty first, twenty twenty. And we had a meeting and we discussed the ground rules with the TEA, and we came to an agreement on the ground rules, and we have subsequent meetings coming up, probably a meeting a week until this is resolved. And that is the, there is the report of the Unit A Subcommittee.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Then opposed, so voted. Rules Subcommittee, Mr. Fiori?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Rules Subcommittee met on Monday, March first, myself, Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Souza. Mr. D'Amello also sat in on it, and Superintendent Cabral and Attorney Mitchell contributed to it. We were tasked with reviewing potential job descriptions for a reorganization of the Human Resources Department. And Mr. Souza at one point had to leave the meetings, and we could not get a majority vote on any particular description. And also Ms. Doherty and I felt that we probably needed to have some committee input on the reorganization itself before we went into descriptions, plus Ms. Doherty made some suggestions to the superintendent in in some redrafts. And so we voted not to take action until after the school committee had reviewed a potential reorganization plan, and we had scheduled another meeting for this coming Monday. That's my report.
Report.
I I I have an, I have an addendum to that. As I'm sitting on that committee, I voted against the motion, so if you could add the record the 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 motion on that and separate those two out when we vote on the recommendations and the report, we can separate those two out because I will be voting against the recommendation as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't include that, Ray, because you didn't vote on the final, but yes, we did dissent from the idea of postponing action.
What was the fi, so what was the final, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, through you, what was the final decision on the um that you move forward?
That we were to receive input from the whole school committee and then meet meet again to finalize the descriptions.
Okay, thank you.
So a motion to accept the report would be in order then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin, I didn't hear you.
A motion to accept the report.
Second.
So motion made and seconded to accept the report, Mrs. Almeida?
So could I get some clarification, please? I don't understand when the committee is going to have input, Mr. Fiori.
After, to adopt the recommendations.
Oh, after the recommendations adopted, then we're going to speak on?
Yes.
Not speak on it now?
We're just accepting what he said.
We're going to accept the report right now, and then there'll be another motion, and then there'll be discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to accept the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then opposed, so voted? Is there an additional motion?
Move we adopt the recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Just so we know what that is, could you repeat it?
The recommendation.
I'm sorry.
The recommendation was to postpone action on the job descriptions until the school committee had heard a plan of reorganization for the Human Resources Department.
I think that's a little different than what you just said before, though. I I don't mean to
I withdraw my second.
Yeah, I I I don't, I don't think that that's what you said originally. That's why I was opposed in the Subcommittee. So I I'll be opposed to this, to oppose, opposing this motion as well. Because that's not how I interpreted that, what you said originally. I'm sorry, Mr. Fiori.
Okay, no, as we, we did have that preliminary vote, but then we had the other vote that said we were, we were going to postpone action on the, on the descriptions until the committee had had input on the on the reorganization plan itself.
Okay, Mrs. Almeida?
I I just want to make it clear that I withdraw my second on that motion.
Got it, thank you.
I thought the motion was to accept the job descriptions as presented. So there's no motions. We can't speak.
Mayor, if I might clarify? There's a motion right now to adopt the recommendations, but there is no second. So if there's no second, then the motion does not care.
Madam Mayor, he didn't make a motion to adopt the recommendations.
Mr. Fiori did.
That was the motion.
Oh, you made a motion to adopt the recommendations?
Yes, I did.
Oh, then I do second that. Thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion to adopt the recommendations with a second on the floor. On discussion. Mr. D'Amello?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is to go before the entire committee to review the job descriptions. Is that correct?
Not the descriptions, the 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 plan of reorganization.
Reorganization.
The script, right, the descriptions will get more specific, but Ms. Doherty felt, and I I agreed with her, that we didn't really have a mandate to do the descriptions until we had a mandate to do the reorganization.
Right, and I was there, and I, and I agree.
And I I think the the superintendent could probably explain it fairly simply, and we can just go back on and hammer out the details in committee and Subcommittee next week, but we did want to at least have the the rest of the committee be aware that there was a reorganization taking place.
Yeah, if I, if I, if I could just real quickly, so we we discussed, we discussed the reorganization. Currently, we have a Human Resource Department that has Attorney Mitchell is here to help answer any questions, Dr. Cheryl Butts, and an admin assistant. So part of the restructuring or the reorganization would be to, staying within budget, would be to add a third person to the Human Resource Department. So we would have an executive director of Human Resources. We would have a Human Resource Director and a Human Resource Specialist, and that would stay within the monetary amount that we currently spend, or we currently have allocated to those two positions. So that was part of the restructuring conversation. I believe we also discussed how we would cover the legal aspect that Attorney Mitchell provides when with regards to special education. And then we also spent time, Mrs. Doherty provides some very good edits to the job descriptions. So the only thing I just want to remind the committee that the clock is ticking. We do have a posting coming out in May. So anything that we can do to help move this along would be advantageous for the district because we will be shorthanded very shortly. But again, Attorney Mitchell is here. If you, there are any questions that you want, want to discuss, but that was the gist of our meeting with regards to the restructuring, covering the legal piece, and then also how to stay within budget and add an additional position to that department, which would give us a four-person Human Resource Department versus a three-person Human Resource Department within the same budget.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mr. Fiori?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the Subcommittee, I made a summary of the three jobs we were asked to vote on descriptions of that I think makes it sound a lot easier. The executive director position is to run the department. Then there is a manager position under that, which is essentially to do the grunt work of actual personnel things, and the specialist is really IT and record keeping. So though that's, that's what the reorganization is, they're doing it without the attorney, but they are redistributing the functions that way.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know, do we come under, do we? Do our job descriptions or the people, how we phrase our personnel? Are we held under mass general law? Because if you have a manager, you have to, you have to be able to supervise three or more people. So we don't come under the same um
I don't believe so, and based on the reaction I'm seeing from some of the board members, I don't believe that applies to that, that would apply to that position.
Okay, so we can have a manager who only manages themselves, basically.
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
As I said, the manager is is doing the backup to the executive director. The executive director runs the whole department. The man, the manager would do a lot of the investigation and interviewing and that sort of thing. And then the other, the other person is to do the record keeping.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. So there's a motion on the floor to adopt the recommendations. And there's a second. If we can move forward with a vote, if everyone's all set? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I'm sorry, opposed?
No.
So voted.
I'm opposed.
Let's do a roll call, Mrs. Fagan.
Okay.
It's not clear.
And, Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mrs. Almeida, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. D'Amello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
No.
Six in favor, two opposed. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Martin?
Now that we have discussed this amongst the full committee, would it be possible or appropriate to have a motion to adopt Mr. Cabral's restructuring plan?
Well, I guess that would be up to the members, but I I mean, I think you just received that plan this evening.
Second.
What's that?
I second the motion.
Hold on a second.
There's a motion, well, is that a motion? That wasn't really a motion, I don't believe.
I was making a motion to adopt Mr. because time is of the essence, as he stated, and the motion that came out of rules was to bring it before the full committee, which we've done. And this would allow the Rules Committee now to meet and discuss those jobs with a job description at their next meeting. They didn't discuss it at the previous meeting because the adoption hadn't been made yet, but now since the adoption, if we were to vote on the adoption, then they could discuss the job descriptions.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, I'm sorry, there's a motion and a second to adopt the, is it the strategic plan?
Nope, it's the restructuring that Mr. Cabral has brought to the committee.
Restructuring. On discussion, Mr. D'Amello?
Mayor, I I I don't think we can do that. It's not on the agenda. We, I mean, I was at that meeting as just an observer, and the whole restructuring of the department is quite complex. I don't think it's as simple as, you know, as being presented here right now. I mean, time is of the essence, but I don't want to make decisions and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars without giving it some thought. I mean, you know, I'm sorry. I don't think we can even vote on that. It's not on the agenda.
Well, it, I mean, it's on the agenda in the fact that it's been brought here from the Rules Committee. Mr. Fiori, did you have?
Yes, I I think in terms of the complexities that Mr. D'Amello was talking about, that gets addressed when we address the the job descriptions. We don't, we're not going to know anything about costs or about some of these other subtleties until we've approved the job descriptions. We we really are just asking for a mandate to be able to discuss them.
Well, the motion is to adopt the restructuring.
Mr. Cabral, maybe you could just tell us what that restructuring is again?
Sure, Mr. Martin. So currently, we have Attorney Mitchell, who provides legal ser services in the realm of special education, while also carrying out many personnel matters, which I'm not doing justice. She wears two hats. So what we would do is we would create a position, the executive director of Human Resources, who would take all the personnel position responsibilities, and then all the responsibilities that were held by Mrs. Attorney Mitchell's predecessor. So that's the job description. So that's one position, and that would be the executive director who would oversee the department. We would then have a Human Resource Manager, which would carry on many of the responsibilities that the current hu hu human resource manager carries out, minus all the technical data entry specialized, no, tracking piece that the data specialist would then do. So we would stay within budget and have three people doing the job that two people are currently doing. But again, Mrs. Mitch, Attorney Mitchell's time is depending on the week, depending on the issue, and depending on what's going on with special education. She's not spending a hundred percent of her time on personnel. She spends a lot of her time dealing with special education legal matters. So by restructuring the office in this way, we would have broader coverage to providers with human resource supports as well as data entry, for example, SIMS. I don't believe it's SIMS, sorry, SIMS is Student Information Management Systems. What is it, some of the data we have to provide to Desi, Attorney Mitchell?
Oh, it'd be monitoring the HRIS, Human Resource Information Systems, and also what we provide to Desi through school, School Brains on our personnel.
So so again, we would have better coverage, better support, and it would make us more efficient, and we would be able to carry out our duties in the human resource side more effectively. Not to say that it's not effective now, but it would be more effective moving forward with this restructuring. And I think it would be very difficult to find someone with Attorney Mitchell's expertise, both with special edu, special education legal, and then obviously the personnel side. But the Mrs. Mitchell's, Attorney Mitchell's here, so she can address any questions regarding the type of work she does day to day. So again, and this was something that we had budgeted for last year. We had budgeted for somebody to provide this type of support, but due to COVID and due to the, you know, the uncertainty of our appropriation, we were not able to fund this position. So this was something that we would have added to the budget. We can add it now without an additional cost. And regarding the concerns regarding legal, now we're losing Attorney Mitchell, we were going to have to up our legal fees when when she left anyway, because I feel it would be very difficult to find someone of her expertise, if anything. And I hate saying this in front of Attorney Mitchell, we'd probably spend more if you were to bring somebody on now with her expertise as well as somebody on the personnel side. So she has provided a great service to the town public schools, and I for one, I for one will deeply miss her professionalism and what she's provided to the leadership team.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we had the restructuring plan and the job description sent to us in a packet. It was forty-eight hours in advance. We had time to read it, time to understand it. I believe that we had time to discuss it with the superintendent if we needed to call him. I don't know why we're holding this up. Every night that we hold this information to move forward to the Subcommittee is one meeting longer than is necessary. I don't think there's one person sitting here that doesn't think that restructuring that department is necessary to keep the school department going the way that we should be going. We need to move ahead. We need to move ahead, people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. D'Amello?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not agree with you, Mrs. Almeida. I'm sorry, I'm one of the eight that do not agree in restructuring and having top heavy administrative positions. I'd like to have a full cost analysis and salary with salary and benefits. Yes, Mr. Cabral does say it's within budget, but when you add more human bodies Yes, Mr. Cabral does say it's within budget, but when you add more human bodies, there's more expenses involved. And I've been told that whether they take the benefits or not could make a difference. We are now going to outsource our legal to our attorney. And my question is, what do we do about our special education fees, attorney fees? Or who's going to handle that? So we have to really just give it a little bit more thought on the full cost analysis of this restructure.
And if I could just provide the group with the point of information. We have, we have, we have the second lowest or the third lowest admin cost in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Out of how many?
Three, 23, 35, I mean, it's over 300 districts. We, it's in the, it's in the budget presentation that I share with you when we do our per pupil costs. We have the second or third lowest, or sometimes we're number one. We have low admin costs in the system and as, I hate to beat a dead horse, but COVID exposed us in many different ways. There are, and we, and you know, I mean, for example, when I became the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, the district was spending about $180,000 a year. I would came in at 110. So we, we wear many hats and there's a massive savings to that. But it also exposes us during situations like this. So I, I believe this restructuring makes sense and provides us in a better position. And I want to reiterate, when the Mrs. When Mrs. Mitchell's leaves, we're going to have to outsource special education anyway, and I anticipate that'll be about five hours a week. Going attorney fees about $200 an hour. So we were already planning to increase our legal line about $50,000. And again, doesn't mean we're going to expend that because it depends on the issues that we're dealing with at the time. But we were going to have to increase our legal fees no matter what.
So if I may, so putting my finance hat on, that's why a full cost analysis, I think, is critical to decision making in any, any, whether it's a private corporation or a public, you know, public system that we're in. I mean, I, I just don't know how we advance to the next level. We can always come back and meet in emergency meetings if we had to, can't we? I mean, to give this some thought and give this, our members a total analysis of how much this is going to cost us taking into account everything that was just discussed. That's my, that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. So there's a motion on the floor and a second to adopt the restructuring. Mrs. Doherty? You're all set? Okay. So could we get that on a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Yes. Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
No.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, on to new business. MCAS discussion, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I reached out to Cabral and to our Chair, Mr. Souza, to ask that this item be placed on the agenda. It has come to me by way of request. So we left it open to decide whether or not the school committee wants to deal with this issue tonight or you wish to postpone the conversation until next week. It really is. If you had to dispose of it this evening, then I'll proceed.
So just because it's such, it's getting late and we have some more items to cover if the committee is agreeable that you postpone it to next week.
I, I don't have a problem with that. Ms. Doherty, just want to give a couple of sentences on what it was actually, the more, the, the, you know, what the, how this comes about, the MASC motion and things like that, and then if you want to discuss it next week, that's fine.
And that really is there, if there is an objection by the committee because the hour is late and we have an executive session to follow the meeting, taking it up next week in full discussion might be better, but a motion before you and it is in your packet or passed on to you at the beginning of the week is to adopt a resolution and a statement regarding MCAS testing for this year. And the motion would be that the Taunton School Committee support Resolution Number One adopted by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and approved by the delegates to that annual meeting in November by a vote of 112 to nine with two abstentions. And further, that the superintendent be instructed to inform the governor and the Education Secretary Jeff Riley and our state legislative delegation of the school committee's position in favor of canceling MCAS for this year. And the resolution reads as followed, be it resolved that the Taunton Public Schools rejects the calls for students of the 2020 year who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up in the 2021 year or ever. We demand that those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS and that their graduation requirement shall be determined by locally controlled voices of the school committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for a moratorium on all high stakes testing for 2021 so that all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction. And so that, you can, you can, we can divide this into three or four sections or we can take it on as a whole. The point being that, as everyone knows, the pandemic has just devastated the work that we're doing. People have struggled, both children, teachers and families to stay abreast of expectation for year-end burden, children and teachers with administering a test either remotely or after they return to school, the little guys return to school in April just makes absolutely no sense at all. Finally, as I understand it, there has to be a waiver requested from the Department of Education of the federal government, and this is going on, on as we speak in order to hold MCAS testing in abeyance. And so that basically is what this effort is about. So now that I've said it all, we could make a motion and dispense with it if you chose to.
Mrs. Doherty, I will second that motion for discussion.
So is that a motion?
Go on with it then.
What, what, what is the motion? Oh.
Read it, and it opposed to MCAS testing for this year.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you. I believe that MASC is working on that right now with the governor and the legislator and the Commissioner of Education. So all we're doing is just signing on to that particular item that they've already working on. Is that correct, Mrs. Doherty?
That's absolutely correct, and there are multiple.
Is go ahead and sign on to it. And I think everybody would be happy. Thank you.
You're welcome. So there's a motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted. Well, that was easy.
Yeah, it really was.
Okay. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, return to in-person learning is next. Would that be you, Mr. Cabral?
It would be. So I, I spoke, and again, I can address or answer any follow-up questions based on my superintendent's report. And the reason I added that was wishful thinking or hope that we would have the commissioner's plan and I could be able to speak more in detail to it. So I will have that as an ongoing item until we get this item resolved and we have a full understanding of what's going to take place as far as what grades and what levels and the dates that they expected to return. But if there are any questions or any information that you would like me to try to address or answer now, I'd be happy to, based on my superintendent's report. I can do that now, but I hope by early next week and after the Board of Education meets on Friday that I can share with you some information on what the commissioner expects from us, our staff, our families, and more importantly, our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mr. Martin?
Mr. Cabral, do you feel that, thank you, Madam Mayor, do you feel that maybe we should have a meeting next Wednesday once you find out what this resolution that the commissioner is going to get from the Board of Education?
I mean, I'd be happy to schedule a meeting, but again.
If you feel necessary, that's what I'm saying.
I, I'd be happy to meet with you, but I just worry that we, I mean, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. I just worry that we might not have the plan. And it'd be a meeting for, for not, but we can schedule it and if we need, I mean, and if we need to cancel it, we can cancel it. But I would not be opposed to meeting and sharing with you as a group and having that discussion of what's expected.
Only because it's going to be the second week of March and they're looking at April to implement this.
Right.
We'll, we'll discuss it late Friday after we get, we'll discuss it after he has the meeting on Fridays. If he has any sense that we're going to have information, then we can probably do it right then and there, but that's how we'll kind of play it by ear.
Yeah, it'll be short notice, so that means we'll probably get the posting out on Monday, Wednesday, Wendy, right? Sorry, Wednesday.
Just block the clock.
A long day.
Yeah, just block Wednesday off just in case anyway.
Yeah, we'll get the posting and I, and I apologize, it'll be short, and whatever information he shares, we'll get it to you as soon as we can. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Cabral. So I understand that we have to get the full results of the surveys from parents before we understand who wants to be five days in school and who wants to be 100% remote. But based on the survey results you already have, if you've only got 12% of elementary school students staying remote, do you envision that these, these classes going forward? Will remote classes be completely separate from in-person classes? Or would we continue to have synchronous classes with in-person students and, you know, 12% of remote students in the same class with the same teacher?
Yeah, we're, we're planning for both. So that's, I mean, we, again, we don't know what the full numbers are going to be, but if you apply 12% across the district and we look at the current staff that we have working remotely, it, it would be difficult to accommodate those numbers. Again, we're going to explore different options. We're going to meet with our teachers' unions, listen to them, share our proposals, they'll share their proposals with us, and we'll try to come up with a plan that works. That'll be, that'll minimize, again, my goal with this is to minimize the disruption to the students, but I want to be fair to our staff. I mean, and, and our principals, so let's not forget them because they are trying to figure this all out too. It's a lot of work. It's, we can't just, it's not as easy as just flipping the switch. You know, I wish it was, but there's a lot of moving parts. And we need to be able to, I mean, I think about the high school. The high school, for those of you who've been in it, those classrooms are not the same square footage from department to department. You can be in the social department department and the classrooms are 600 square feet. I mean, I'm throwing numbers around, I'm making up numbers. You can be in the science department and there are 1,000 square feet. So it's not like Friedman in some of our newer buildings where every classroom is the same size. The high school is one of those buildings that's, that's a little funky as far as trying to figure out where to fit, where to fit and how many kids we can fit in classrooms. So that's why we need to get that data and figure out how many kids we can fit safely and, you know, and plan accordingly. And we want to be sensitive to the needs of our teachers as well. I don't think that's the answer you're looking for, but that's the best.
No, no, I, that, the answer I was looking for, that's the answer I, I expected. It's, it's, this move is, in my opinion, way more difficult than the move we did before. It's going to take a lot of, of questions. And to your point, elementary, middle school and high school, completely different animals, and you need to get that survey data as soon as possible. And I just want to say, I don't want to wait for the plan from the, the commissioner or the governor because exactly as you said, past history, like, we need to move forward with our own information, make plans that's best for Taunton Public Schools. So yeah, I'm of full support and I understand how difficult this is going to be. So good luck to you all coming up with this plan.
Good luck to us.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mrs. Doherty?
Yes, thank you. Simply, and two things. One is that it's very important that we, in the conversation about reopening or going back to, that we take take decisions around pool testing, that we have talked with no closure. You mentioned it in your opening remarks this evening, but I would like to have a definitive going forward because I think that's essential. And then some plan, and I know there are conversations going on at the state level about getting teachers, all school staff vaccinated, and the closer we can get to the reality of that on a statewide basis and here in Taunton, the better. I know that is working very hard to bring vaccinations to everybody here, teachers being very critical in this, in this mix. So I, and, and secondly, it's, it's really important, I think, that the school committee hear first before a public announcement about the way the district is thinking about proceeding once you understand generally what the commissioner is going to have to say. Whatever he has to say will become public anyway. But the way in which we respond to it is the way in which we respond to it. And I guess I'd like to know that first.
I can, I can answer the, I can answer the first two, and I thank you for, thank you for, thank you for reminding.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I can answer the first two, or the first question regarding pool, pool testing and vaccination clinics. So with pool testing, I will be reaching out to all of you individually to share with you the work that is ongoing with pool testing. We are close to piloting pool testing in, in, in a school or in multiple schools. We are close. We've had very, a very, a very good meeting with TIMA here in Taunton and also the Massachusetts Medical Reserve Corps. And we've reached out to some communities who've been very successful utilizing the Miramis pool testing, which for me, in an urban district, makes the most sense. So two, I, we, I received a proposal today from a vendor to vaccinate all our staff. The big question is, can the vendor get the vaccine? So that's the question. And will it be the two shots or will it be the one shot? And we're also reaching, reaching out to another vendor to be able to provide a vaccination clinic in Taunton for our staff. So that is work that is ongoing. I think we're making some good headway. And I like what I'm hearing from the federal government to prioritize our teachers before the end of the month because I think that'll alleviate a lot of concerns as we head into April and support our work. I'm, the second piece, it's tricky because we're bargaining this. So if I do meet with the group, I would probably talk to Chairman Souza as far as what we can and what we can't share. Maybe it's something we meet and meet in executive session because I don't want to impact or jeopardize our bargaining strategy as well. So I am not opposed to meeting with the group. I just don't, I just want to make sure that we do it right. And I also want to make sure that we don't hurt ourselves when we impact bargain rolling out this plan. So that's kind of where I am, and I hope you can understand opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. We all set? Mr. DeMello is next.
Just very quickly, before we move on to new business, back to item one, is it possible without a formal motion that we could publicize the resolution on the Taunton Public Schools website so the folks at home know exactly what resolution we took action on this evening? Is that possible?
I see, Mr. Cabral shaking his head, yes, so. Okay.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll have that done first thing tomorrow morning, Mr. DeMello.
Okay. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor and a second. Uh, hang on. I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't think there is one.
Okay, I'm looking at my old notes.
Yeah, that was just information on the in-person learning. That was a follow-up information on Desi's information.
Yes, if you saw my desk, you'd know why I, I'm losing my notes.
That's why I'm here. I sit next to you, but I'm, I'm, I'm kind of next to you on this Zoom.
All right, so we are on to unfinished business.
I have, I have something of a new business.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Susan, new business?
Yeah, I know it's getting late and we have a couple more heavy items to talk about. If I could tell my colleagues, I just want to make a motion to refer to the budget workshop. The parental notification system for buses. I, I'd like the administration to get us a cost on that, what it's actually can do and, and forward it to the budget workshop so we can discuss it. I've had conversations with people about this and it's been kind of an ongoing thing in my mind for the last several years. And, and it may be time to implement this, so I wanted to look for the total cost. And just so we can put it to the budget workshop, doesn't mean we're going to implement it, we're just going to gather more information, get the cost. And if we want to incorporate it, we can. And I'd ask somebody to second that and, and we vote on it. That's all, so we can move it to the workshop. That's all.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. And as it's not on the agenda and it's only being referred to. And as it's not on the agenda and it's only being referred to the next agenda, there's not discussion on the motion.
We can discuss it as long, we can discuss the motion as long as it pertains to the the content of the motion, that's all.
No, if there's, if the, if it's not listed under new business, there's not.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, it's on the agenda.
Point of information, Mayor, I I don't really understand what this motion is.
Okay.
Could you please repeat the motion?
Yes, Mr. Souza?
Uh yeah, uh Mr. DeMello. So uh under under the Bloom Bus Bid Specs, there's an option for parental notification system. In other words, it's an app. They're coming down the road, they know how close they are, how far away the bus is. It's a, it's kind of a GPS type of a thing. And I just want to get more information on it and potentially have us uh explore it during the budget workshop.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, so there is a motion. There was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Not opposed, so voted.
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, so if there's no other new business, we will move on to unfinished business, strategic draft plan.
I think we already covered that, right?
Yeah, we covered that during my superintendent's report.
Okay, I I thought you wanted to go into more detail, but that's good. Uh, action plan, item review, anything on that?
I don't see anything that we need to change at this moment.
Uh we we could take off the uh.
Bottom one?
Eleven eighteen twenty.
Oh, yes, we just did that today.
And I I guess the question I would ask is knowing that I'm going to be continuously bringing the strategic plan back to you. Um that's something that we can leave on or something that we can take off because I do plan on making that part of my regular presentations uh year to year.
Okay, so do we need a motion on that?
Uh, well, we need a motion to take anything off, so uh I think Mr. DeMello has a question before that. Uh is is that? I see Mr. DeMello has his hand up. I don't want to make a motion yet till he.
Okay, I didn't see that. Thank you, Mr. DeMello.
Yeah, it's it's just regarding the strategic planning process. I think we can, we can relabel it. Because I I think we have a new superintendent, but I think it should remain on the uh on the action item list. As continuous updates, maybe we can do a quarterly or biannually, but I think it should remain there and just rephrase it in a different context.
I'll I'll work with Wendy to get that rephrased, uh, Mr. DeMello, and.
And I think twice a year makes sense. Because we can, I I can give you an update at the start of the year, and then we can bring it back at the end of the year and talk about how we're doing.
And so so with that being said, then we we'll uh, since we made the, he made the presentation tonight, we'll strike eleven eighteen twenty community and put team update. We'll strike that one.
Okay.
And and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted.
Can I make, sorry, can I make another suggestion? Sorry. Would it make sense then to put the strategic plan by annual updates on our planner?
We we can do that uh when we, when we continue on, when we stretch the planner out a little bit.
Yeah, because I I like seeing that list shrink.
Let's, let's. We'll keep it on there and then we'll, that's okay. I think we'll, I think it'll be fine.
Okay, all set? Okay, no press and we.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, unfinished business. In in our packet, we had a communication from Special Education Director Judith Mulrooney. Uh regarding the CPAC that I brought up a couple of weeks ago. Uh I I don't know exactly what this document means. Uh I think Superintendent Cabral mentioned that someone's going to reach out to the CPAC folks to schedule a meeting. I don't know what the progress is on that or if. Because this is not very clear. Yes. As far as interacting with the superintendent and school committee.
Yeah, so what I, when I spoke with, when I spoke with uh Special Education Director Judith Mulrooney. You know, she indicated to me, she meets with the CPAC. And what we could do or what we, what we could do is have them provide reports that we can share with the school committee. So that is, that is one of the ways that we can engage the CPAC to provide updates. Uh the CPAC could also, I believe that that's the way she articulated it to me. Is that communicating periodically with the superintendent as well as special education administrator therefore can be helpful. So the Elementary and Secondary Education Department, and this is their regulation as written, recommends the CPAC develop procedures. That result in at least annual written status reports to the superintendent to share with the school committee. So they were.
I thought the conversation was we were going to invite them superintendent.
That's.
I thought that was the context of the conversation.
Oh, I, I thought you wanted clarification on the regulation. That's why she wrote this up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, but if you want us to reach out to them for a meeting, if that's the, if that's the wishes of the committee, we can reach out to the CPAC for, to schedule them for a presentation. Just if you guys could just direct me on how you want it, I'd be happy to reach out to them.
I I think at this point here, we get a lot of things going on. I don't think there's time on the schedule from what I see to do this, so. I think we should stick with the regulation and that we can ask for a report uh from the, we can ask for the report, I think is what we should do.
Uh with with all due respect, Mayor, I'm sorry, but the superintendent did say that someone from his office is going to contact the CPAC folks. The director, whatever titles they have to come before the school committee, so I I think we need to follow up on that, Mr. Susan.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure that would be helpful.
Uh, I'll, well, let's, how I would say then, but let's, can we get through April? And then schedule this sometime in May, once we get our kids back in the building?
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with any time. I just wanted to be for the end of the school year so we know where we stand. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Doherty and then Ms. Almeida.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, just an observation on this document. And uh first, I don't know what the source of the document i- i- is. It's not school. A committee policy, otherwise it would be referenced. I don't know where this information came from, where it is embedded in some writing somewhere in the. Taunton. What the Mass General Laws say about the role and work of parent advisory, because Special Education Parent Advisory Council. And I reference uh seventy-one B section three in the Mass General Laws pertaining to special education. Where it's quite specific about the role of, the role of the school department vis a vis CPAC and vice versa, so. I would suggest, and and because this is March twenty ten, that. Number one, we want to know where this came from and that it needs to be updated and comply with what the Mass General Laws say in regard to the work of CPAC and then. The questions that Mr. DeMello uh is asking can be better addressed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um CPAC has always gone to the um special program subcommittee. And then a report from the subcommittee comes back to the full committee. That's a point of information as to how it used to be handled. I don't know if they still want to handle it that way or not, but um. That's basically what we've done in the past, but probably want to do something different. Thank you.
You'll, thank you, Madam, Mrs. Almeida. Any other comments on this issue?
Well, I just want to say if the, if the, I'm sorry, Mr. Souza.
It's already, now I'm the presiding officer right now. She stepped out for a minute.
Uh as Chair of the. The Projects Committee, um if the school committee wants to refer this. To the Special Projects Committee and then we can make a report back out to the school committee in terms of the law and the statement, the policy, so that we can get our ducks in order. And then move forward from there, would be happy to do.
I think we need to get, be clear on this. Mr. DeMello, does that satisfy your your uh your initial um?
It it does, but you know, I'd like to throw in there a a community, a school committee liaison uh to deal with CPAC, so. It doesn't get lost in the shuffle as part of the special project subcommittee meeting or as a committee of the whole, whatever, however you want.
So if we do the special, if we do the special projects.
Losing, we're losing, yeah, we're losing, we're losing this and I don't want to lose it. I I, this is, this is something that is near and dear to my heart. It's something I don't know all about and I'm still learning. Uh but I think we can't lose sight of it and unless we have this on the tip of our our agendas and, you know. We we need to, we need to address it. That's, that's where I'm coming from, Mr. Susan. Thank you.
But thank you, Mr. DeMello. So if we send it to special projects and have them sift through everything so we can get. Uh the process and get all the information gathered and what we should be doing or we shouldn't be doing, and then we can uh. They can, if that's the case, we meet with them, uh CPAC, and always do it as a committee of the whole or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Palowski, Mr. DeMello and myself are the that committee, so.
Are you on the, are you all three on the committee? Yeah. So if you could sift through all of the information and then, you know, that that, I think that'd be good. So if you do, I don't think we need a motion, but if you could put that on your agenda, Mr. Doherty, and the administration could put it on the special projects, I think that's a good start. At least we can get it moving forward and then we get, gather some information and and move it forward. Does that satisfy everyone? All right, great. Got got to hear it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Um. The next uh item on the agenda and we'll have to go, we're going to be going into executive session. Uh, Mr. Cabral, do we have Attorney Gay standing by?
Well, I haven't been following, I haven't been looking at my phone, so.
I think it'd be a good time right now. I know we aren't supposed to, but it'd be a good time probably right now to do that.
Yeah, he got, he got the invitation, correct, Wendy? Did Wendy freeze?
Uh, yeah, she don't, I I certain people are freezing on and off tonight, so I don't know what that's um, that's about.
It looks like Mrs. Fagan froze.
Yeah, I. I think we have a little bit of a.
And I can take, Attorney, it looks like Attorney Gay is now with us and I checked my phone. I haven't seen any messages from him, so. He may have been confused about tonight.
Do you think we should uh forego that?
I I would be happy to share the information in executive session and if the group wishes to take action, they can. If they want to hold off until the.
Yeah, why don't we do that? That and then if if people want to uh hear from Attorney Gay, we can also do that. So uh the the chair ought to take a motion to go into executive session and the the executive session motion to go into the executive session to discuss strategy. With respect to litigation and discussion concerning potential claim for reimbursement of money per agreement with H and L Bloom Bus Company pursuant. To exemption three of Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one, A three, and to reconvene in open session.
So moved.
First, I have a motion from Mr. Martin and a second from Mr. Fiore on a roll call vote to go into executive session of Mrs. Fagan. Please call the roll.
Yes, my phone just rang, sorry. Mr. Doherty? Yes. Um, Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mister, Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Uh Mello?
Yes.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Jake's colleagues. Uh, there was one motion made in the executive session to accept. The document uh in the agreement with the Bloom Bus Company from this uh last year and to put closure on any further um. Any further um talk on that uh subject and. Mr. Almeida?
Is Nathan missing or is he here? Oh, no, he's there.
Yeah.
Ma- Mayor's not here. So so that that was, that's uh my report. Uh for the executive session, we'll just need to have a roll call vote out here on that, on the uh motion that in executive session. And Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Sure, Mr. Doherty? Yes. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes, yes, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Oh.
And Mr. Souza?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, you see, is um adjournment. Uh, the chair ought to take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion is and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying no. Guys have the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Have a great week, everyone.
Before you guys, before you guys log off, don't forget, um if you're interested, I'm going to be holding office hours. Either by phone or by Zoom Saturday from eight to ten. If you're interested in a half hour slot, email me, text me, or call Wendy and uh. We'll schedule you eight to ten. There'll be standing office hours via Zoom or by phone and once we get to, if we can get to a point where I'm coming into the office on Saturdays. You guys can bring me your coffee, that's all.
Yeah, and what.
Is that the only time we get to talk to you is on Saturdays?
Nope, and Wendy is, Wendy is also going to schedule, I'd like to schedule a standing time with you on a weekly basis.
Delight confession.
Wendy, no, it's if you need it, it's there. If you don't need it, it's not there, but that was part of my reflection during the retreat to offer more opportunities to speak and meet with you guys.
John.
Bring eggs.
I just want to tell you, I'm down a pint. I gave another pint of blood today. It's a good thing we're done with this meeting. I'm exhausted.
Good for you, Christine. Good for you.
Oh, God.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Have a great, thank you for tonight. Take care.